If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the public comment section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Well, I'd like to call a meeting in order. Welcome to everybody here for the February 6th County Commission Meeting. Pastor Tim Franklin, are you here? If you would come up, please, and give us an invocation, I would appreciate it.
Father, we thank you for your presence in this place. We thank you for your strength and how you bring order to our lives and a sense of security. And I pray that in this place tonight, as things are discussed and hashed out, I ask that the peace that passes all understanding would rule our hearts. I ask for the spirit of wisdom and counsel to fill this room and that your heart would be found in every decision that needs to be made. Thank you for your amazing grace, and may it be evident that it filled this place tonight when everyone leaves. I give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If we could all rise, please, for Commissioner Felton, who will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation in posterity, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes from the last meeting, please? There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second? Commissioned by Commissioner Tobias. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Now, we're on to resolutions, awards, and presentations, and we will turn the mic over to Commissioner Goodson for a minute, please, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Today, this might be appropriate. It surely is appropriate in our world today, kindness all around, so maybe tomorrow we should all try a little of that and see how far it gets us. Now, anyone here prepared? The lady here is here to prepare to speak. Please come on down.
Ms. Wilcox?
Yep. Okay, please. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. I wasn't sure I was speaking or not. Thank you, Chairman Steele, for letting us do this kindness symbol. I do have a couple of students with me today, Rosalie and Tommy, right there, who were part of our efforts to start this kindness symbol when they were in my kindergarten class, and they've continued to be kind throughout these years. And they're the epitome of exactly what we want to happen, is to learn it when they're young and keep it going as they get older. We'd like to encourage everybody to not just be kind, but also to see the kindness symbol and share it and spread it, and so that it helps remind other people to be kind also. Thank you so much.
Hold on, Ms. Wilcox, if you would, please.
Sure.
I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution for you, and then I think he'll present you with the formal resolution and take picture, okay?
Perfect. Can my kids come up?
Yes, absolutely. Everybody should come up.
Absolutely, please.
A resolution recognizing the fifth year anniversary of the kindness all-around symbol. Whereas on February 7th, 2019, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners in a proclamation recognized the kindness symbol as the official symbol of kindness, and whereas this kindness symbol was an initiative started in the TK-1 classroom at Tropical Elementary in Merritt Island, and this kindness proclamation was the first official act recognizing the kindness symbol. And whereas since then, the kindness symbol has received many recognitions, including proclamations from most cities in Brevard County, Cocoa, Cape Canaveral, Satellite Beach, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Rockledge, and Titusville, as well as many businesses and entities, including the Cocoa Beach Chamber of Commerce, Merritt Island Library, and the Veterans Memorial Center, to name a few. Key West was the first out-of-county proclamation on July 16th, 2019, followed quickly by Green County, Ohio, to become the first county outside the state of Florida to adopt the kindness symbol. And whereas on February 19th, 2020, the Florida House of Representatives and the Florida Senate both signed resolutions recognizing the creation and promotion of the kindness symbol. And whereas Representative Posey submitted remarks into the Congressional Record recognizing the kindness symbol, U.S. House Resolution 509 submitted by Rep. Posey was referred to the Committee on Education and Labor. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, that the fifth anniversary of the kindness all-around symbol is hereby recognized with all parents, students, community members, residents, and visitors of Brevard County, Florida encouraged to use and promote this official symbol of kindness. Done, ordered, and adopted this sixth day of February 2024.
Is there a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Goodson, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you so very much. Now, we want to gather down by the front. Commissioner Goodson? All right, let's go. All right, let's go on down.
Excuse me. Let me get you a picture right over here.
Commissioner Goodson, you have the floor.
My wife taught at Tropical for 20, 25 years. It's evident by living with her or married to her, 49 years, she might want to repeat the kindness, so I'm going to put her back in the program, okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so very, very much. Okay, we are now going up on the consent agenda, and there is one card in the consent agenda, and it's for F-2, and it is for Victoria Connors. Are you here, Victoria? Come on up, please.
I just got clarification, so I'm not going to be speaking tonight, but I got clarification on what I wanted to find out.
Okay. You have no comments, then?
My only comment is that on the, I guess, you're approving for funding for the F-2 DEP agreement in M-034. It's on the Flamingo Drive. It's a, I guess it's funding for a swell to prevent erosion, and in doing so on North Flamingo, you would be taking out trees which are there as a screen for the motel that's directly across Flamingo from my home and many homes. And it's a big concern for me because, number one, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of that motel, and sometimes not a very good traffic, if you know what I mean. So, to be able for them to see into my home across the street without that barrier is a concern for mine. Also, the barrier of trees and seagrapes, it also prevents a lot of erosion. We don't have any flooding on that street. I know on South Flamingo, there's flooding. And I don't know what good a swell would really do, honestly. I think maybe hooking up to sewer systems and putting in some storm drains from the actual street, because where the majority of the funding in that or flooding in that area is actually on Ocean Boulevard. And I don't know if it's coming in off of A-1A and coming down the little street there because there's a slight decline, but that's where the flooding is. And I don't think it'll, I think it'll be a waste of money to put in a swell, especially on North Flamingo, because there is no flooding and there is no erosion. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Does the commission have any of these comments that they want to pull on the consent agenda? There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes. So, we now go to... Yeah, we're on public hearings in G-1. Who's going to handle that? Mark?
Good evening, Board. G-1 is a petition to vacate two public utility and drainage easements, 1335 Anchor Lane, Glen Isles. It's in District 2, vacating a portion of the public road utility and drainage easement for the construction of a roof over an existing deck. There are no concerns or complaints.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's a motion by Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second by Commissioner Pritchett? Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right, we will go to unfinished business on H-1. Peter, are you going to handle this? There you are.
Yes, sir. This is a reconsideration of two sports grants and the total amount of $18,000 for Smooth Running LLC. Believe Mr. Barnes is here as well for questions.
Mr. Barnes, you might as well come up, just in case there's any questions. A question to the county attorney. I don't, do we need to go back and waive the rules again, or they continued from the last meeting?
In this case, the rules were waived for reconsideration on this subject, and then while it was under consideration, it was continued, so you do not need to waive again. This is just a continuation of the reconsideration.
Okay, thank you very much. From the commission, Commissioner Tobias.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just had a couple of questions with your indulgence.
Absolutely.
Mr. Barnes, I assume you have some reference here. Maybe you can help answer these. And I appreciate you updating your request. There were just some things I didn't understand, so maybe you can clarify. Start with the event budget that you turned in on 129. The last entry you have there is the full price is $103. I went on the website, your website, and the price there is $113. Can you, was that just an oversight?
Well, that is either an oversight, or $113 is what happens after cutoff of online entries. That's the highest price possible.
Yeah, again, it's not reflected in the budget that you turned in.
Well, it wouldn't be, because we only collect online entries, is what we really have records of.
Okay, so I get a little concerned when there are things that aren't in your budget, but let's go to this.
It would be no more than a handful of entries, if any, if any.
Okay. I'll go to the second one. In the initial budget you turned in, I have that reference there, you have $3,000 in sponsorships.
Mm-hmm.
In the event...
Which I've been this for?
This is the first event. This is the Smooth Running, the Cocoa Beach Triathlon, Duathlon, and 5K.
Okay, correct.
And then in the one that you turned on, turned in on 129, that $3,000 is no longer theirs, or sorry, I said $3,000, I apologize, $5,000. Did you lose those sponsors?
Well, no, no, I didn't, Commissioner Tobias. You all were focused in the last meeting on my revenues from entries, and that's what's included here. I specifically went back to the entries and revenues, and that was, that was the whole subject of matter at the last meeting.
Okay, so...
So, you could add that $5,000 in sponsorship. I was focused on revenue entries, because the original paperwork you gave me...
I just want to, I just want transparency.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, just slow down. Everything's going to be fine. Just let everybody talk so that we don't talk over each other.
Okay, so, let's go to the third thing here, and again, you said registrant, so let's go with that farce. I looked at the budget that you turned in on 129 as opposed to the one previous, and on the 129 event, the Shuttleversary 5K, looked on your website, that costs $45, but I did not see that $45 anywhere reflected in the 129 budget that you put in. There's a picture of the Shuttle K-5, Shuttleversary 5K, the list price $45. Again, the budget, it's not included in there. You estimate on the 125 one that there will be 300 entrants.
Correct.
So, can you explain why with 300 entrants at $45 or less, whatever it was, why that's not reflected on the most recent budget?
Actually, it is reflected, right, Chair. Full-price entries, 108 at $45 each, 4860.
Show me where that is.
If you look at under Shuttleversary 5K, the third line on them down.
I'm looking at the budget that you turned in on 129.
So am I, Commissioner.
Here's the budget you turned in on 129. It has a total of 790 entrants.
You're talking about the Shuttleversary 5K, I believe. That's what you just referenced.
I did. And the one turned in, the Cocoa Beach Triathlon and Duathlon, it's not listed there.
Well, yes, sir, it is. It's right here. This is exactly what I turned in to the TDC and what they sent on to you.
This is exactly what I, this is exactly...
I never turned anything that looked exactly like that, so I'm not sure.
I didn't make these numbers up. This is what I got.
No, no, these are the papers I actually turned in. Nothing had art or color of any sort on it.
Peter, did the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tobias. Peter, did you put something different on these numbers?
Not to my knowledge, sir. I think we included everything that we received, unless something maybe accidentally got omitted, but I don't believe so.
So, just to be clear, so these blue ones here that I received from my office, you did not turn in?
I turned in nothing with color. This is exactly what I submitted. They were two-word documents, right here. The only color I've ever seen are the ones you submitted in the last meeting.
Commissioner Tobias, do you have any more questions?
I do have some questions here as why I'm receiving something that's different than turning in, but that may be handled differently. Let's go to profit-loss here on the third one. The profit-loss, initially, you have a difference of $11,400 on your 123. Is it fair to say, once, once the revenue of the sponsorships is put in, you will no longer be losing money on this adventure? You'll be...
That's certainly the intent. I would say yes, yeah.
Okay, no problem. It's just making money and then receiving more from government may draw some ire from some folks.
That's, that's the intent, yes.
I like your honesty. USA Beach Running Championship, there, same issue here, but you willfully admitted it, it sounds like, that you put down $3,000 in scholarships in 123, but your 129 budget does not have that 3,000. Is it fair to say that you still have those sponsorships?
Yes, that is still there.
It's just not reflected in the budget.
Yeah, and again, the focus of the last meeting was on entry revenues.
Okay, my, just, I'm sorry if I was unclear. My, my, my focus was on full transparency.
Okay.
Clearly, there are, thank you, Mr. Barnes. I appreciate you going a little bit more. Clearly, there are some inconsistencies here. I mean, even if we find one where on the website, it's $113 today, and it's not reflected on, on the budget. So, I appreciate that, but it's still not a, a good representation of what we have here.
Mr. Barnes, just stay there for a few minutes, please, if you would. Commissioner Pritchett, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I think, Mr. Krantis, if we could, next year, I think we discussed this, of maybe them turning in after the project their financial statements, and then we can maybe compare to the budgets and help them with better budgets, turning them in and what we're looking for, so they're a little bit easier to read.
Yes, ma'am. We can certainly do that.
And understand. Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with you making some money. My question would be, is how many people do you have that come in from out of Brevard County that are participating in your races?
Well, it depends on what it is, ma'am. The Cocoa Beach Triathlon, over 60%, over 60% come from out of Brevard County, largely Orlando, St. Petersburg, Tampa, we draw straight across the I-4 corridor. We also get a lot of residents for the Cocoa Beach Tri that come from out of state, because basically, if you're in the Northeast, it's too cold to be doing triathlons, they're not doing them then, and that's why this race is so popular, too, one of the reasons.
Okay. I had a little struggle with you last week, but Commissioner Steele and Commissioner Goodson seem to be very fond of this, so Commissioner Steele and Goodson, I'm going to vote with whatever y'all would like to vote with. I think I got a lot of questions answered. Commissioner Goodson, it's kind of up in your neck of the woods, even though it's like all TDC, but Commissioner Steele, you brought it in, so I think I know what you're doing.
Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the chair, please?
Yes, I would. I'd love to hear from Commissioner Goodson, though.
Commissioner Goodson, you have any comments?
I'm sorry. I am for it. They're going to get rated at the end how much bed tax they get, so I'm for it and going to vote for it, and I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett. All right, new to biz, new, new to business. Okay, how about some new business? Development Environmental Services Group, Community Service Group, L-1, who is handling this? Okay, Mike?
Can you hear me okay? Mike Knight, Endangered Lands Program Manager. We have for you today some options to consider regarding future funding of the Endangered Lands Program. I know you've seen this presentation already, had a chance to review it, so I'm going to move through it pretty quickly. So, this slide highlights a little bit of program history. I'm not going to go into a lot of details here, but the main takeaway point here for you tonight is that four previous referendums in the county utilized an acquisition contractor to handle the land acquisition efforts of the program, and they were the primary interface with landowners during the acquisition process. And this issue's going to come up a little bit later in the presentation. Next slide is the ballot language for the two previous and most recent referendums. The most recent has some specific language related to the protection of lands that directly protect the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River. Since the program began in 1990, we've acquired a little over 28,000 acres of land, and the program directly manages only 19, a little over 19,000 acres of those properties. The land maintenance activities of the program include prescribed fire. We maintain 102 miles of fire maintenance lines, fire control lines. We maintain a variety of public-use trails for a variety of activities, 49 miles of access and maintenance roads, 61 miles of perimeter fence lines, 33 trailheads and parking areas, and a lot of effort in dealing with exotic species, both plant and animals. This slide highlights the recreational uses of the lands that we manage under the program. Main point here is that we have three environmental education centers, the Enchanted Forest in Titusville, Sam's House in North Merritt Island, and the Barrier Island Center in South Melbourne Beach. And the program also maintains over 81 miles of public-use trails for activities such as hiking, biking, equestrians, and paddling. As the board considers its options moving forward, we have identified some capital equipment and recreation projects for the existing lands that we manage. Those are highlighted here. I'm not going to go into those, but we can bring those back up later if there's questions. Historically, lands have been acquired using three main methods: fee simple acquisition or direct purchase from the landowner, and two forms of donation, either donations from the development community for mitigation, or donations from individual citizens that are non-mitigation-related. The key areas we're seeking board direction on are noted here. Funding for ongoing maintenance of the existing lands and centers, acquisition for lands that include out parcels within the existing lands that we have, that are surrounded by the conservation lands, and potentially lands that directly benefit the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River, and to improve the public use, improve and expand the public use opportunities on the lands that we have. As identified in the 2022 ballot language, lands providing protection to the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River were ranked based on the criteria noted here. The lands are included in the overall land acquisition list... The lands are included in the overall land acquisition list recommended by the EEL Selection and Management Committee. Our goal here tonight is to ensure that this aligns with the interests of the board moving forward. This slide highlights the ranking sheet that's used to prioritize these particular lands. Just a quick reference on the colors, the blue essentially represents wetland, largely wetland properties that are primarily wet. Green represents out parcels that are within the existing conservation areas that are primarily uplands. And red shows which of those properties rank the highest based on this criteria. It's estimated that of those red parcels on the right side, the estimated cost would be in the neighborhood of about $28 million to acquire those. Historically, we've typically had a success rate of about 50%, so we would estimate that cost, you know, splitting that in half down to 14 million. Subject to change according to any input we have from you folks tonight. The next few slides are just some slides that represent those red parcels in relationship to the lands that we already have acquired. So, lands that are bordered in green or blue are already conservation lands within the holdings of the program. So, there's, I won't stop on any of these, but we just had four examples here for you to review. Whoops, sorry. All right. This slide shows the actual operating expenses for fiscal year 2023. It also represents the anticipated operating needs of the program moving forward, of course, depending on the direction of the board related to land acquisition. We have currently 23 full-time staff members and six part-time. And I believe you also have in your packet a financial condition report of the program that was prepared by CRI, that's been reviewed by the Chair of the Audit Committee and was approved to be here with you today, and that the findings in that report are consistent with the information here. So, looking at potential bonding options for you to consider, this first slide focuses on bonding specifically and related to debt millage associated with that. And depending on the direction of the board that the board would like to take, there are additional corresponding operational costs and millages that are on the next slide that would correspond with these. Option 1 is issuing bonds to fund primarily capital improvements to the existing facilities, lands, and equipment, and to fund annual program operations at the same level that was stated in the previous slide. And that's a 3.2 million in bonds. Option 1A would be, is added to that, so this would include option 1, and this would be to issue bonds for some initial land acquisition that would focus on lands directly protecting the lagoon and the St. John's River. That would be 6.2 million in bonds. Option 2 is to focus strictly on issuing bonds for a new education center and field office on the existing lands that we have and fund the annual operations of the program at 4 million in bonds. Option 3 would be to issue bonds for some additional land acquisition in the same criteria, so to expand the acquisition efforts, again, focusing on the lagoon and the St. John's River. And it would include those options, those lands within option 1A, and fund annual operations of the program. And of course, option 4 would be any further direction we received from the board or how you would like to mix or match or address those. The next slide is the operational costs related to those. So, depending on which option you chose, the corresponding millage here for operations would be added to the bond, the bond millage. I'm not gonna spend any time here, but we can come back to that if you have questions. And the last slide I have for you today relates to some additional direction that we would need if the board wishes to move forward with some land acquisition. Historically, it's always been handled by an acquisition contractor, and so we would need some direction on how you would like us to approach that, whether it would be, you know, going out to an RFP for a contractor and how you would like a contract like that structured if we did go down that path. Keeping in mind that all purchases always come back to the County Commission for final approval. So, you're the final stop for any acquisition that would be considered. And this would come back to the board, you know, depending on what options you chose to look at tonight. So, with that, I am through.
Okay. Thank you very, very much, Mike. I assume that all of the people that filled out cards tonight are in favor of us doing one of these options. Is there anybody that's opposed to us doing one of these options? As a result of that, I think probably we've got a lot of cards, so we're gonna leave it at two minutes instead of three minutes, because I'm sure the same thing is gonna be said over and over again tonight, but we do wanna hear what you have to say. So, with that, Philip Stastick?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. It's great to speak with you today. I'm Phil Stastick, North Merritt Island, and I am speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. We strongly encourage you to adopt options 1, 2, 3, and open it up to 4. Please, this is your opportunity to use that money that the citizens of this county have asked you to spend to protect our wildlands, our river, our Indian River Lagoon, our beaches. They need protection, and they need protection as soon as we can possibly do it. The best way to do it is to set the lands that are still available aside as best you can. Protect the lands that you've already chosen to protect. We know that, I'll let you tell you my personal experience. I've had the pleasure of doing orchid gardening. I've cleaned up our rivers, both underwater and on the shore with Cape of Vard beautiful. We've adopted a spoil island. We've done many things over the years all across this county to help protect Brevard. I first came here back 45 years ago as an aerial photographer, and when I flew over Brevard County, the Indian River Lagoon was clear. The St. John's River was clear and healthy. Over the years, we've seen that change. My wife and I moved here 30 years ago. The population, by the way, it's very interesting to see the correlation. Population, when I first flew over this area, was 273,000 people back in 1980. 30 years ago, it was 400,000 people. Today, there are 660,000 people living in Brevard County, and we are depending on you to please do the right thing, protect our county. Please, full speed ahead on all options. Acquire land, protect our river, protect our lands. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Okay. So, this is a kindness night. I would kindly request that we hold all of the applause on each one of these, or we'll be here till 2 o'clock in the morning. So, it's gonna be an interesting night, and everybody's gonna be kind, and we're gonna get through it as quickly as possible. Tom Unwrath, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. Tom Unwrath, live 1170 Idaway, here in Melbourne, District 4, under Mr. Feldner's protection. I'm really not going to speak so much to say what to do. You've already alluded to that, Mr. Steele. But let me give you a little bit of the why. I'm a pastor, Lutheran specifically, and the way I see the environmentally endangered lands program is not just to protect, and I'm very much for protecting the wetlands in the Indian River Lagoon, St. John's River, but also to enhance the opportunity for us and others, not just in the county but outside, to be part of what God has given us. God's creation is wonderful, and I'd like for us to maintain it as best we can. I would like to see us not only maintain the beauty that God has given us, but then to use it for a purpose that others can also enjoy it. Some of what Mike put up there and how that can happen, totally, totally behind all of that. So, again, that is part of the reason I see for why to do this, to be good stewards of God's creation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lilian? Lilian Lieber? Oh, okay. I just didn't know where you were. I was trying to find you. There you go.
This is impromptu. I just... My name's Lilian Lieber, Cocoa West, and I just wanna present the missed opportunity that you guys are faced with, and that is the James Road extension. This is fragile endangered land, has not been identified as such. We know different. We know that it's probably very important to the ice community. We've seen evidence of it, and we're waiting to get approval for more investigation. It has many nests of the endangered gopher tortoise. Couple of bobcats were seen yesterday roaming the property. And we've had sightings of the scrub grass, of the scrub blue jay. Couldn't get pictures 'cause they're pretty fast and they're... And the plants that grow there are so... Has anyone been there? Has anyone seen this parcel of ground at James Road? I would encourage you all to view it before it gets destroyed by ground clearing and by that new development. I understand where it is. I understand you don't have that ability, but you do, in the grand scheme of things, you have the ability to take whatever property you can purchase. And I think it needs to be put into our hands where it can remain as a preserve in terms of the nature preserve, not in windward preserve. So, please give that consideration. We need evaluation of this property before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to just remind the audience that please keep it specific to our agenda item that we're having right tonight. I appreciate Lilian's comments in regards to a particular piece of property that the Eels Committee might purchase, but that's not where we're on tonight. We're on to the County Commission making a decision on which option they're gonna take. So, with that, I'm gonna go to Josie Howe.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Howe, West Cocoa area. And piggybacking off of Lilian, but in a new direction. Missed opportunity has taken place multiple times with endangered land in the county. Lichen, we're with the state right now about an agricultural, I mean, archaeology survey that excluded possibly, if anyone took 4th grade history, they would have known where to have dug on this property. But the thing is, in going forward with the EEL, contractor versus committee, I really urge you as a board to discuss using a local contractor with a committee oversight from afar, because with this property, back to 1959, 60, no one ever locally owned the property until recent. It's always been, this is the example of a land go awry because no one knew what the land was. So, with your considerations moving forward, it's very important and imperative that it be committed out for searching, because Brevard County is a huge county. I grew up in a huge county with historical prevalence in Texas. I grew up in the city that was the first capital of the republic where Sam Houston died. And they are just now getting everything back in order because too many people moved in, and the first 300 families, which was my father's branch of the families, and actually part of the fifth and sixth cousins founded Brevard in the 1800s after the split and the move from Barbados. And so, the thing is, local looking to not have any more missed opportunities, because the land in which Lilian is talking about, the county held in a five-year right-of-way trust, that there should have been archaeological surveys done. With the state, there is no archaeological survey on the master site file until the year 2021. And this is what she's implying, that the missed opportunities, don't miss another opportunity to preserve deer lichen that's endangered. Anyway, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Richard? Come on up, my friend.
Rick Havelinger, 2000s Unit for Drive, District 1. I don't wanna throw a wet blanket on anybody, but I'd kinda like to understand, when you guys sell bonds, investors buy the bonds, and when we pay interest on the bonds? So, what is the cost impact to the taxpayer? We're no longer doing anything on non-ad valorem tax. We're not collecting, right? We stopped doing that, as I understand. If somebody could discuss how this impacts, because you made a statement in the text that you would talk about the options and the cost to the taxpayers. And the bottom line gets into it. It's like we are asking to spend money of ours, and somehow we are, the people are going to pay for that. I don't know, you know, it's a great idea to buy property, but at what cost? I mean, I'd love to tell you to buy the windward preserve, buy it back. They're gonna try to preserve some of it anyway. Why couldn't we work with them to help them preserve that property? Maybe offset a little bit of the cost, maybe ask them for compromise to reduce the housing slightly, because they've got a problem with the wetlands in there. So, but still, we're asking to, and I'd like to hear what the options are. The newspaper said something about 50 million. Is that the max that you're allowed to go? What would the cost be to the taxpayers on 50 million dollars worth of bonds? Because you're gonna have to pay for it out of tax dollars, right? Nobody's giving us this money for free. I'd like to hear what the tax implications are. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Is this Wade Olson? Is that correct? Come on up, Wade.
Hello. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Kind of the same subject to a certain degree. However, a lot of these properties, wetlands that are being developed, like we have going on throughout the county, they do mitigation through mitigation banks of the wetlands. But unfortunately, a lot of these credits that they're buying, they're preserving wetlands outside the county. So, I think that this area that most of us maybe are referring to on the north end of Friday Road could be an opportunity to establish that as a local wetland mitigation bank. So, that way, it can be preserved within the community and shared by the community. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Debbie Pudorov? Is that how you say it? Pudorv? Okay. Hi, Debbie. Come on up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name's Debbie Pudorv, and I'm from Cocoa. And I'm also speaking to the Jamison Road Extension. I am here to ask for your consideration to use part of the conservation land purchase funds to purchase this acreage. From what I understand, I don't want to be going off your topic of your four options, but I believe one of your options is to purchase land. This area was annexed by the City of Cocoa from unincorporated Brevard County, and it is a protected old-growth live oak area with other flora as well, threatened gopher tortoises, protected Florida sandhill cranes, and many mammals. The surrounding area is very rural, and it would be a great opportunity to purchase land to protect our beautiful land for the future. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Debbie. Anita Unwrath?
Anita Unwrath, 1170 Idaway, Melbourne, but really only about four miles from here, Vera East, I think they call it. Yesterday, my church, Advent Lutheran Church, had a Bible study, the Women's Bible Study, in our Gather magazine, Scriptures and Nature: Teachers of Faith. And we were talking in one of the studies about Noah. And there was a very interesting question here about Noah. Who are some of the Noas in your local community who helped protect and sustain creatures or the planet? protect and sustain creatures or the planet? I would like to say that you probably have a whole roomful of those Noas here today. And what kinds of things are they doing? They're doing all kinds of things to protect the environment. Our environmentally endangered lands program is so important, and we, the voters, recognize that, and 70% voted in favor of it. I ask you, please, to go to the $50 million bond level, because saving Brevard County is something that is so important to all of us here on the Space Coast, that we have this wonderful nature that we're surrounded by. We have so many Noas here. We've got our EEL program. We've got the Natural Resources Department. We've got Brevard Zoo. We've got a bunch of nonprofits recognized here today. And all of us are in favor of this program, because we voted for it. And now, the question, how can you join them? That's for you five commissioners. Will you please join the other Noas in the room and fund this program to the maximum allowable? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Baker.
Hello.
Hi.
Chris Baker. I live in Melbourne, but I'm also Chair of Space Coast Surf Rider Foundation. We are a big environmental organization, and I agree with what she said. And I'm also here supporting the Indian River Coalition. You haven't called on them yet. So, whatever they have to say, we are in support of that as well. We hope that you want to continue with the EEL program funding. We need to, for all of us, and all the animals and the whole community. So, that's it.
Thank you so very, very much. Cindy Olson? Good evening, Cindy.
Hello, I'm Cindy Olson. I live in West Cocoa, and I, unfortunately, came for that same topic you're not real happy about. But I just wanted to... I would like the ELS program to consider buying the 212 acres at James Road Extension. And also, this is wetland property. It has a lot of wildlife that is endangered, and they're doing nothing whatsoever. I've been reviewing all the documents on the St. John's River Water Management, where they have the permit. You can read all the documents online. And they're hiding the wildlife species. They submitted a report. They didn't even, they say they're going to talk about it, then they just leave it out. And it's not in there. And then they have an environmental assess... They had a Phase One environmental assessment, and they said they found gopher turtles, and they recommended a Phase Two environmental site assessment done, and this was not done. So, the St. John's River Water Management District is not properly processing this application. Also, I looked through the application form they filled out. They left out sections that they didn't even fill out. They didn't check the wetland box in their application. So, this is really getting shoved through really fast, and we just found out about it like a month ago. And so, I just wish somebody could help save this property.
Thank you so much. It's not that we're unhappy about it. It's just that we have to take, put the horse before the cart. And what we have to do tonight is make a decision on where we're going to go, and then we can study all the criteria and let the Eels Committee go to work. So, I apologize if I'm trying to keep you back on track, but we can't discuss single pieces of property tonight. But thank you for all your comments, and at some point in time, I'm sure we will be listening to all of them when we get to the point where we have the money. So, thank you very much. Vince Lamb? Hello, old friend. How are you?
Doing well. Good evening, Chairman Steele and Commissioners. I came, of course, prepared for three minutes, and I can adapt. With the passage of this referendum, the voters of Brevard County have empowered this County Commission to show leadership in protecting our waters by purchasing lands and preventing the pollution associated with development. The Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River need strong county leadership. In 2016, after the massive fish kill, Commissioners Barfield and Smith stepped up as leaders. They embraced the Save Our Indian River Lagoon plan developed by Natural Resources. They got community support, and they got votes for approval. More recently, the Commission simply reviews the annual updates from the COC and approves them with just small changes. A number of people are here tonight who aren't speaking to show support of this bonding and the land purchases to protect the lagoon and the St. Johns. May I ask them to stand?
Sure, please.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Today is your opportunity to show leadership. You can vote to initiate the bonding and the purchases of the land to protect our waters. You can bond and authorize the maximum 50 million. You can authorize a lower amount. You can do nothing. The choice is yours. Please step up to protect our waters and the life that depends upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Tammy Hoysington? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Amazing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for allowing me to come up here and speak. I am also from West Cocoa. However, what I am going to say does have something to do with one of your measure numbers. I didn't get it written down, I'm sorry, but it is about saving the waters. If our floodwaters were to just be let go, if all our trees and our wetlands and everything on that property were to be destroyed, it would greatly impact the St. John's River, greatly impact. And it's already, it already flows slow enough. It already stays at flood level for months, as everybody knows. I doubt if we could keep pollutants out of it, if we were to cut all the trees and build all these homes and have pavement on there and everything else. It's just impossible. I do have an exciting thing, and it's about the wildlife. How many of you have seen bluebirds?
Pardon me?
How many of you have seen bluebirds? I mean, real actual bluebirds, not blue jays, not blue scrub jays, but actual bluebirds. They've been gone in our area where I live for over 10 years. There's been three spotted in the last two weeks. So, that's pretty exciting. But you know what? If all that stuff is gone, and our wetlands aren't protected, and our trees, our pine lilies, which are also endangered, are not protected, because there are... That's a real shame. That's a real shame. I've only been here three years, and I love this county. I plan to die and be buried here, because it is beautiful. But, as many people have already said, we are asking you to please, please be advocates for that property, because the property cannot speak on its own. So, please protect it for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Martha Pizarro? Good evening, Martha.
Good evening, esteemed board. It's a pleasure again to be here. And this evening, I'm wearing the hat of the President of the Friends of the Enchanted Forest. For 33 1/3 years, we have been working with the EEL program and our natural resources to give education, passive recreation, some conservation and preservation to the lands that we call the EEL program. The Enchanted Forest was the flagship for this entire program. And I wanted to share with everyone, I can't show you on TV the shirt I'm wearing today, but I do have the gopher tortoise, and some of our scrub oaks are in here, and then the beautiful emblem for the Friends of the Enchanted Forest, our ancient oak.
Very well done.
And I knew we wouldn't be able to see that on TV anymore, but I wanted to let people know that's what we're representing, and we have those symbols that we take with us. We're having an enormous amount of impact. This is the first month into the year, and those numbers on attendance are growing and growing and growing. Even if it's raining out, crowds of people are coming. It's amazing. And we want to keep that up. We want to bond at the maximum, so that we can keep this program going another 20 years. Beyond that, we are hoping that our ancestors will be very glad that we've put all this together, and our descendants will have something to enjoy. I will leave you with the words of our esteemed Joni Falls, who is Enchanted Forest Sanctuary Steward for many years. May the forest be with you.
Very nice, very nice. I'll let you applaud for that one. Ronald Jercutic? Jercutis, okay. There you go. A little help from my friends here. Ronald, where are you? There he comes. Ah ha! There he is. You got the big stick. I remember the last time you were going to use it on me.
Ron Jergutis, resident of this county. You got door number one, door number two, door number three, or door number four, to spend money. I understand it takes money to get this done. Hopefully, staff is going to be doing the correct job on this. But as I remember, being a resident of Florida since 1973, actually '72, vacationing many, many years when I was a child here, it was totally different. And my major concern here is, I've seen Fort Lauderdale, I've seen Miami, I've seen West Palm Beach, I've seen Tallahassee, I've seen a lot of places. And we get this going here to save the land and save the land, and we need to. We need to do that. But are they the correct choices of where they're being saved? Is there enough participation to ensure that it is saved? Because I'll give you examples in these various communities. Hopefully, this will not happen here, but it's already happening with rubber dust hitting our waterways, not only the Indian River Lagoon, but the St. John's River. Are we going to save the correct places? Because at one point in Fort Lauderdale, I lived down there for a while, nothing will be developed past the road on the other side of the interstate. It's going to be saved everglades. Nothing is going to happen. We've got this land by God. And then, it happens. More money. And guess what? They developed, and they kept going west and west, young man. I hope this is spent diligently, correctly, and in the correct spots, and there needs to be a lot of citizens' input. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Well, Keith, Keith Winston, did you bring anything from the zoo for us tonight, one of the endangered species?
We have enough animals.
Okay. Good evening, Keith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking up this important topic. I really want to just make one point about what a great investment this is in our community. As you know, 70% of the citizens voted for it to bond up to $50 million. And here's two reasons why I believe that's so. First, the nature of the process. As you saw, the options tonight, and I encourage you to bond as much money as possible. If you take a look at the actual pieces of property, they have low value in terms of the tax market, but high value for conservation. They're pinpointed for that purpose, and that's well-done by the staff to date and the selection committee. Second piece I want to talk about is the intrinsic economic value to us as a community. As you're probably aware, the EDC and the TDC just completed a unified brand. They literally engaged thousands of people in Brevard County to talk about what makes life here so special. How do we recruit the kind of people we want to live here, engineers, other folks like that? And literally, how do we bring new companies here? And if you look at the brand, it's built about two things, space and technology and nature. And the two live side by side. Without the nature, people don't move here. So, when people wonder about the investment, this is the best investment we can make about keeping our economy thriving, protecting the lagoon, the lands that buffer the lagoons, the lands that bring quality of life, the lands that showed up in all of that work on the brand. So, I encourage you to bond the maximum possible, at a minimum, to combine, you know, one, two, and three, and start the work. Because as this gentleman said, you know, time's slipping away. So, let's get at it and empower the teams here, and your very able staff, to move forward, protect the right land, build the right facilities, engage the next generation, and keep this place really special. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith. Craig Wallace?
Good evening, gentlemen. Craig Wallace, I'm representing the Chairman of the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. I'm going to just keep our perspective on this to the lagoon mainly, but certainly also the rivers. This is really the opportunity for us to preserve some of the wetlands. You know, as you can see, that's become kind of a focus of looking at future lands here. Wetlands are super important. One, because that's where all this surface water is going to drain when we develop all the areas around here that aren't maybe purchased by this bond issue. But those are the critical areas where we're going to keep from flooding, and we're also going to keep that water from directly going into the lagoon, including the lagoon. So, those are the perspectives I'd like you to consider when you think about this. And these are areas where, as was said, these are basically swampland. Let's just keep it in that state, because that's the best way to filter the water, keep it clean when it gets into the aquifer, and keeps it out of the lagoon. So, that's my focus, and thank you. Get as much land as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Rhodes-Orde. Oh, there you are. Good evening, Sarah.
My name is Sarah Rhodes-Orde, and I represent the Sea Turtle Conservancy. Brevard County voters supported the Eels Program referendum in November 22 by a very wide margin. Brevard County residents have spoken. They see the positive benefits of the EEL program for our community. The Sea Turtle Conservancy supports the Commission moving forward with bonding the referendum as written, to keep the existing nature centers and possibly a new center open, maintained and staffed, delivering exceptional educational programs. The nature centers are gems utilized by over 63,000 schoolchildren and visitors annually. For many, these centers are their first exposure to the wildland trails, the beach, the Indian River Lagoon, and the positive emotional and psychological benefits of a strong connection with unspoiled nature. These centers and trails, they're not just places for wildlife. They are essential for human well-being. To fund continued land management and public access, taxpayers and matching funds of $42 million have been invested in enhancing local biodiversity and maintaining a native landscape for wildlife and people to recreate. EEL maintains 70 miles of trails, including waterfront lands on the Indian River Lagoon and its tributaries. If EEL discontinues their land management practices, the native landscape and access to it will be lost in just a few years, as will the gains of the last 30 years. To acquire additional land, the referendum specifically supports the county continuing to acquire sensitive lands. EEL has identified properties that will enhance wildlife corridors, allowing safe passage for a variety of imperiled species. Many of the targeted lands are wetlands that clean and filter out pollutants from the water before it drains in the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River. Both of these land-buying priorities are consistent with state leadership priorities to purchase lands in the Florida Wildlife Corridor and improve the water quality of the Indian River Lagoon. The EEL conservation lands, the existing 28,000 acres, and the future acquired lands improve the water quality of the lagoon, which over time will support seagrass recovery, and that is critical food for our juvenile green sea turtles, make their home in the Indian River Lagoon.
Thank you so very, very much. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, in 2022, I did quite a bit of advocating for this tax to pass, and so, it was, I was very grateful to see it pass. I have just a couple... I have just a couple comments, a little bit different than some of the other speakers, a fiscal one. So wetlands are the heart and soul of Florida. They improve water quality. And more importantly, when we have hurricanes, they mitigate damage. They give a place for the water to go. And what we see with development, we have much more stormwater going to the Indian River Lagoon. So I just want you to consider that it is very much a priority to acquire as much in the way of lands. And although you may be inclined to think, oh, this is going to take it off the tax roll, as some of our commissioners have stated in the past, the savings to our insurance industry, which is in crisis under the Florida, sorry, the federal flood insurance program, the county has obligations as well to protect wetland areas. These areas are not really supposed to be developed, but Florida doesn't have a good track record in that regard. I would say, however, that in looking at this, I don't see in the referendum language supporting new centers nor an office space. So I would encourage not to do the option B for the field office, but to focus entirely on the acquisition of wetlands that will have a fiscal impact for putting stormwater to a place. And to work with St. John's, because they sold off and they, a few years ago, were getting rid of some of their conservation lands, to work with them, that they are also combining efforts with Eels to continue their acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Mr. Swan, I know you got in here a little bit late, but would you like to speak? If you would, on the way, after you're finished, if you'd fill out a card, Jim, I'd appreciate it.
You'll run a good meeting. Thank you. I've talked to some of y'all before, but my biggest deal is I came here, there's 180,000 people in this county. I moved here to get away from all the people that moved into Clearwater where I was raised. Now there's 600-plus thousand people. And what I ask y'all to think about is what happens, what's it going to be like here when there's 800,000 people? When there's a million people? And we've just got to have recreational green space and protected areas that kind of keeps pace with that growth. And so if you buy a little bit, there'll be some for all those new people to enjoy. So that was my only real thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Okay, we are finished with the cards, and I'll turn it back to the commission. And who would like to go first? Commissioner Pritchett, you want to take the floor?
Mr. Felton does.
Okay, Commissioner Felton, are you ready to go?
I want to throw something in. I can be. So I think we can come back in the future and bond more money. So while I appreciate the comments today for us to go to 50 million, I don't think that's the right thing to do to, out of the gate, go for the maximum. So I think there was a comment earlier about, you know, not building a new building. I have to tell you that I happen to agree with that. I think the voters voted to buy land. I'll tell you where I would be. I would be, and I know in here the options, bond 14 million, I'd be closer to half that amount is what I'd be comfortable with. And we can come back in 90 days so we can get the ball rolling, we can see how this goes, we can see what's out there and what's available, and we could revisit this, you know, the rest of the amount, the whole amount, whatever the board's pleasure is, in a few months. That's what I'd be comfortable with. Well, so, seven to bond, yes.
Commissioner Pritchett, mad. You have the floor? Let him speak.
Kind of what everybody had to say first. Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You do what you want.
Commissioner Tobias.
Commissioner Tobias, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to first of all say that I support option one. I think that there's some needed equipment to help maintain the lands that we have. There are certainly some improvements that need to be made for boardwalks and, from my opinion, some ADA compliance issues. So I'm fully ready to go forward with the option one, which is a bond amount of $3.2 I'll get into some reasons. I mean, I guess it's already been thrown out there, a number to bond. I'll give you some reasons why I don't think bonding is probably the right way to go for land acquisition. I'll start with the first five properties that were listed in there, all consist of wetland. Generally, wetlands cannot be built upon. Ownership alone does not have an impact on the lagoon. So the question is, these wetlands continue to serve as natural filters for the lagoon, whether they're owned by the county or whether they're owned by an individual. There's no net positive. And then when we get into net positives, I'd like to definitely say what a great job SOARL has done. They've got an approach, they're using math behind it, and I would like to see that same approach done here. And I think that's incumbent upon us. The SOARL plan states the amount of speed of nutrient reduction are the two most critical factors affecting the success of restoring the Indian River Lagoon to health. If we get at the ballot language here in the attachment, it says to directly benefit the Indian River Lagoon and St. John's River. So the way that SOARL did this was to determine how many dollars per pound of nitrogen and phosphorus. We've identified that as a key driver to healing the lagoon. That's what it says here in the ballot language that we're looking to heal the lagoon. There's not one project listed here that has any empiric data that it's going to help the lagoon. So until we saw that data, I think saying we're going to potentially bond land is not fair to our constituents. We have folks out here that are already saying, buy this land, buy this land, buy this land, and we haven't even begun. So for the reasons that there is no net positive impact for wetlands, whether we own it or not, it's still going to be a place for filtering. And number two, we're saying this is going to be good for the lagoon, but we're not measuring it. And the same way that we're spending the SOARL dollars, I think is the same way that we should spend these Eels dollars. And until we're given that data, I think it would be premature for us to say, go spend $7 million, or go spend $14 million, or as some folks have said, just go spend all $50 million. So again, I will be strongly in favor of option one, which is bonding in the amount of $3.2 million for upgrades to existing facilities as well as equipment to help support those upgrades.
Thank you. Are you?
Commissioner Pritchett's got the chair.
Oh, I got the chair?
I thought you did.
No, sir. You keep asking me to speak.
I'd like to give it to you after you finish with Mr. Goodson.
Thank you. I have a hard time. Thank you for sitting here. Whichever chair, okay? Question to Commissioner Tobias. If the wetland is owned, is it not true that they could mitigate it and develop the wetland, buying mitigation credits somewhere else?
But where many of these wetlands are located, the odds of mitigating a wetland on a piece of property that is 90% wetland is highly unlikely. As you know, as a developer or someone in that field who's paved a great deal of Florida, which I greatly respect, you know, I've mitigated wetland when I purchased a piece of property, a small portion, less than 5% of the property had wetland, and it was mitigated. You would never buy a piece of property that was 95% wetland and then mitigate it. The properties that we're looking in here are overwhelmingly wetlands, so the likelihood of that happening is slim to none.
Okay, question, Chair, one more, please.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Tobias, then, would you, are you advocating, do I understand you correctly, that you would want to see some sort of a 1 through 10 items that by buying Eels land, they would have to prove the need, just like SOARL proves their, their money is spent and they prove where it's going?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that's what the voters demand. They had down here that we're to use it to help heal the Indian River Lagoon. We have Tetra Tech that's gone out there and shown us the dollars per pound of nitrogen and phosphorus. I'm not a scientist, but I'm going to go by what we've used in the past. I think that same rubric we should use when spending these $50 million. If we can show that buying a piece of land has a net positive effect, using some scientific measure other than buy this land, I would be more than willing to look at it. But I have no evidence here that shows we will have any level of filtration, any level of nitrogen removal, any level of phosphorus removal. And again, that's what the SOARL plan indicates is important to healing the lagoon. Buying land is not the answer.
With your comments, would that responsibility be placed on staff? To prove to us that it's a good reason to buy this land? Would staff be the one to have that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
The same way that the SOARL committee goes around, if that requires some sort of contractor or someone with that area of expertise, but I'm not willing to ask individuals to part with money via bond without having some data to show that there will be a positive effect on the Indian River Lagoon.
And are you approving one and one A?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I don't approve anything.
Was your recommendation one and one A?
Absolutely not. It is one.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pritchett, do you have comments?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping to hear what Commissioner Goodson was landing and all this. She asked a lot of good questions, but I still have a footing what you're thinking.
Really don't know what I'm thinking yet.
Okay.
I was just curious what Tobias was thinking.
I'm curious to hear from you guys tonight, to kind of figure this out. The things running in my head is the voter approved this at large margin, that they wanted it for, I think it said in there, to maintain or to purchase. So, you know, definitely to maintain, we need to move that. So option one's definitely on the board with me. The other ones, I think we should be looking at them. I can't help it, I'm an accountant, and interest rates are so high right now. So I would have a little more comfort if we kind of had it solidified what we were going to look at. I'm comfortable going with Commissioner Tobias's idea, or Commissioner Felton, I liked your idea too. But I think, I'm thinking this year the interest rates are going to start coming down, so I would like to see what it is we're going to purchase, just because it is all y'all's dollars. I think the delta, and it's like $6 a year to the average taxpayer in a $250,000 home, which is almost everybody now. But with responsibility on that, I think I would want to see the property we're looking at, like Commissioner Tobias is asking, because this commission's going to have to vote on it too. So I think if we had a piece of property and then we start working towards this, that might be a better route as well. But I'm fully in agreement with the taxpayers of finding this property and purchasing it for the reasons that they asked to do it, and I think it's a good idea. But responsibly, I would like to see the Eels boards come with the number one we want to do, and then we vote on it, and we get working on the bonds. But that's just my thought on it.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the floor?
I certainly will.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Steele, are you wanting to talk?
Well, I want to talk because the people have talked. They've been very loud and very clear on what they want us to do. I have served 50 years in the real estate business, and I was born and raised in Fort Lauderdale, and I can tell you right now, I don't want another Fort Lauderdale. I don't want any more problems. No, please, please don't. Please don't. I apologize, I didn't make anybody want to clap. But I can tell you right now, if we don't get on the stick and start purchasing lands, we're going to be ruined. We're going to be ruined. And I cannot believe that we're sitting here after the people spoke with 70% saying, go get some lands, go buy the lands that are in the potential area. If I had it my way, I would buy all the land that's on the ocean, I would buy all the land that's on the river, and I would stop the development from going any further. Tonight, we have a very, very critical choice. And I was prepared to go to 25 million tonight and hopefully go to get the other 25 million at another point. It doesn't look like that's the way this commission's going, but I am absolutely in favor of option three. We need to move, and we need to move now. The wetlands are a very, very important item that we need to purchase. And there's, and I understand Commissioner Tobias's argument. I don't totally agree with it, but I'm a private property rights guy, and you're seeing it, but you're hearing a private property rights guy say tonight, without buying these wetlands, without buying these properties, we're not going to have any private property rights anymore. So I would like to move that we accept option three as the issue for this evening.
Okay, real quick, I know you guys really like the guy, but I'm going to ask you not to applaud, just so that you don't boo if somebody says something you don't like, so everybody's got an ability to speak their opinion. Fair? Okay, poker face? All right, here we go. Commissioner Felton, are you trying to jump in, then Commissioner Goodson's?
Yep. Thank you. By buying land, unless I'm mistaken, you're not going to stop people coming to Florida. Now, if you can pass building a wall up there around Jacksonville, go to it. When I was born, there was 3 million people in Florida. I don't know, some people say 100,000 a day move into Florida. I don't know. It might come a time that you, or we, or all of us want to move to Georgia. Don't know. Now, but, but I do think there is some validity to what Commissioner Tobias is saying. There should be some sort of a checkmark and balance on land buying that serves the purpose that the voters voted for, and that was save the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River. So that being said, I would support one and one A. That would be what I would support tonight. Giving time for us to check Eels buying or land buying, or giving them an opportunity, or staff an opportunity to say, this is a valid piece of property. Okay, that would be my selection.
Thank you, sir. I don't disagree with that. Not that if something else comes back, I wouldn't vote for another bond issue on this to get it going, because we can. But I think that would be a minimal amount of money, or actually, $3 million isn't very minimal, to go out and find the number one thing that you want to buy, or the first few things, and we can come back and have discussion, because every purchase has got to come before this board anyways. And I don't think that would be that long of a process, and I think hopefully that would drop those interest rates down, because bonds are going to be very much higher in interest than regular mortgage rates. John does? You got your light on?
No, it's an old light.
It's an old light, yeah, I thought so. Commissioner Felton, are you ready to jump in, sir? Are you?
I think we have a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
I don't think we had a motion. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. No second.
From Commissioner Steele.
Oh, that's right, no second.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
You can.
Okay. Let's start with softball, because I think we're all on board. It sounds like we're all on board with option one. So I just want to get, I want to get that ball rolling with that. We can take that off the table, and if you want to add after this motion, we can do separate motions. So let's at least hopefully get, I move to approve the bond option number one, to issue bonds in the amount of $3.2 million to fund capital improvement to existing facilities and equipment, and to fund annual program operations, the amount of $3 million to maintain existing conservation lands and environmental education centers. That's the motion, Madam Chair, that is option one. That's the motion.
Do you have a motion on the board for option one at this point? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
I think we're going to do two motions. Commissioner Goodson, I think you want that one, too.
Well, I wanted it.
Well, we'll come back and do your other one, too. Okay?
You're going to do it that way?
Yeah.
I'm voting for it.
Okay.
Okay, if we're doing it that way, I'll vote for it, too.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now, do I have a motion for the other $3 million for option one A? We'll come up the chart here.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Goodson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias, an objection. Do I have any other motions on this?
I'd like to move that we go back to option three.
Okay. We'll try one more motion. Okay, I have a motion for option three. Do I have a second? All right, that motion died. All right, that motion dyes for a lack of second. And my thought is, let's find some stuff, bring it back, and let us to continue to approve them. As we're working on the rubric, always leave the R out on that. And then we'll figure out a way to get these, and we're doing a good job with them. Thank you, guys, for all you do. Are you trying to say something?
Yes, thank you. What we're going to do in light of that, we will bring back to the board an item so that you can discuss how we move forward with identifying that land, i.e., as Mike had indicated in the presentation, you know, we'll need someone to look at the land, sort it out. It was the Nature Conservancy for the first two bonds, I believe, and my understanding is that they really are not that involved in that kind of work anymore. So, we're going to have to go out. But we'll bring back at a future meeting in the near future, the different options that are available that were outlined in the presentation, but we'll give you more detail on it.
Okay. So, we have voted, and we have picked up on option 1 and option 1A. And now we're going back to the agenda. We're on public comments. Are we on? Or it's board reports. So, county manager, please, got a report for us?
I have no report at this time.
County attorney?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Felton?
I have a board report, I have a request after, after Vice-Vice Chair. Can we take a five-minute break?
I would absolutely love to take a five-minute break after that. I have no report. Okay, Commissioner Tobias, it's up to you, and then we go to public comments.
How about me? I might have.
Oh, Commissioner Goodson, I'm, you don't have anything. So, I would never forget you, but I did. Sorry. It's old age.
I got you.
Mine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today is National Chopstick Day. Useless Florida fact, the world's most comprehensive collection of works by Lois Tiffany resides in Morris Museum of American Art in Winter Park. This day in Florida history, on the day in 1959, United States successfully test-fired its first Titan I intercontinental ballistic missile from Cape Canaveral. And most importantly, the employee recognition, and I want to thank D4 for the nomination here, is Mr. James Aquino. James, are you here? Hopefully, from Roads Bridges, Lead Heavy Equipment Operator 2 in Public Works, 26 years of service. James started his career in October 1997 on the countywide dredge crew. Once this crew was disbanded, he was assigned to Merritt Island Road and Bridge. He served there for many years before transferring to Melvern in 2019. Over his 26-year career, James' strong leadership skills and ability to organize work groups for optimum production has made him an invaluable member of the Road and Bridge Program. The D4 Commissioner said, quote, "I appreciate his many years of service and his experience and knowledge about our district. He has a can-do and let's-get-the-job-done attitude that makes him a great asset for the county and district." Quote from the director, Mark Bernath, "James Aquino is a rock star. He's our fixer for every maintenance issue countywide. Give him an assignment and get out of the way, because he's, along with his team, will ensure it gets done right the first time." Quote from Ryan Mertz, "James has always been my go-to employee. No job is too difficult for him to finish safely and in a timely manner." Couple of quick fun facts. James is a collector of vintage VW cars and enjoys going to car shows. He also has a food trucks that specializes in Thai food. He was recognized for saving the life of his coworker by administering CPR after he went into cardiac arrest. James is married and has two children, Jamie and James. We thank you for your service, all you do for not only District 4, but the entire county. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that opportunity.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back, and we will address the next part of our commission meeting. Thank you very much. You'd all have your seats, please. Lou. Well, you either grab your seats, or I'll adjourn the meeting. All right. Thank you. I didn't want to grab that big hammer. All right, we're going into public comments now. Peter, where are you? Yes. Hey, Peter, how are you? Come on up. You're ready to come up, yeah. You want your public comment on the side.
It's that time, huh?
It's that time.
Let me, let me ask my family to sit down, all right?
Sure.
Hey, you guys, can you all sit down?
I brought a few people here tonight.
I noticed.
We're with the Brevard Renaissance Fair. We just finished our ninth season at Wickham Park, our final season at Wickham Park. Hopefully, we can change that. We had thousands of people come there this year. We've had thousands of kids and families and stuff come over the last nine years. 11 years ago, we started Eastern Florida State College at the old grounds, and then it was sold, or traded, or whatever the deal was. So, we moved into Wickham Park, and we've grown and grown and grown. We have an event that's about 14 acres, brings in 70, 80,000 people a year, brings in millions of dollars to the local community there. I spoke to one vendor that lives there for eight weeks every year, and I asked him to keep track of how much money he spends this year. He spent over $8,000 in Brevard County. We have hundreds of vendors that live there for those weeks. We have thousands of people that come in and take hotel rooms. But last summer, you passed a resolution, or you changed one of the rules to the park, section 70, 70, 70, 7882, and basically banned us from Wickham Park, even though it wasn't intended to ban us, or we weren't the target, it did hit us. We now have no home to go to because of the resolution. We're forced to move out of Brevard County. It's our home, it's our namesake, it's everything we've built. All of us are from Brevard County. We want to stay here. I'm asking you, as commissioners, to make a change back on that rule and allow us a couple of years to find a spot in Brevard where we can develop and grow, and build a site that the community can be proud of and live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
And, oh, by the way, I do have a petition to give to you of about 3,000 people that signed in the last four days.
All right, thanks. Just hand it to me, Peter.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. We'll end up giving this to Peter Kranus. Okay, Sandra Sullivan.
Good evening. So, we had our rally this evening here at the, outside the commission offices before we came in, so we're a little bit late. Just want to talk about a couple things. One, I'm very disappointed in the commission for not taking a vote a year ago in May. You at least addressed the public comment aspect, and at the time, that wasn't decided to move forward with that. And I would like to say that I think that this is a violation of county commission policy, VCC 97, which declares it to be a board policy to promote the maximum participation in county affairs by affected or interested citizens in accordance with the First Amendment protections guaranteed under the United States Constitution. That is from your own policy. So, if I'm clipping video, which seems to be the obstruction, and on issues that are of public interest, and people are concerned about it, then that is engaging the residents of Brevard and the, in our, in our county. So, second issue is, I came here this evening, as I said, we had our rally. We have a beautiful natural reef. And under the Magnuson Stevens Fishery Conservation and Management Act, this is protected as stressed the ecological importance and uniqueness of the nearshore, Keweenaw Rock outcroppings in Brevard County Mid-Reach Study Area. The nearshore hard bottom has been designated as official fish habitat and is very important to several fish species and shrimp. Unfortunately, as I go through the documents, it seemed like there is a, I'll say alleged bait and switch, when there was only allowed 300,000 cubic yards of material, according to Fish and Wildlife Service, but we ended up with double that in 2020.
Thank you for your comments, Sandra. Francis Gomez, please.
Hi. My name is Francis Gomez. I'm a neighbor on Wickham Park. In the last seven years, I saw how the fair bring business to our area. Business who pay taxes, business who pay the money we need to buy the land, we need to preserve our lagoon. Business who make taxes to pay your payments, to pay our community. If you go around in the fair, in the park, because I walk in there every day, you said, "Oh, many people is not enjoying the park in the time of the fair." You're wrong. I'm sorry, but you are wrong. I saw more families from Brevard enjoying the park at the time of the fair than the people I saw daily walking their dogs in the same grounds. We are killing business when we kill our fair. We are killing supermarkets, pharmacies, restaurants, and other kind of business, just because one or two people want keep the park with a week in between. Maybe one people is upset because he's unable to walk their dog in the trails. And what happened with the other families here? I'm a neighbor in that park, and what happened with us? What happened with our business, with our schools, with the money we need for our county? I just asking for you, as a commissioners, thinking on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Sox.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll be a moment. I just wanted to give you an idea where this windward preserve you've been hearing about tonight is located. It's easy to find. You drive up North Friday Road right to the end where it intersects with James Road, and it's that quadrant of land. But there's even an easier way to see it. Drive up I-95, go east on the beach line. As you approach the slope where the Bright Line Tunnel is underneath, look to your right. There's a 221-acre expanse of what looks like a beautiful pine forest, and that is the land that we're talking about. It has to be preserved. It's very valuable. They're finding items now that were never discovered before, including possible Indian mounds. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. Richard.
Rick Helfelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, District 1. I kind of always use this as a moment to kind of wrap up the meeting. We had some good participation. I love to see the community get involved with their government. I did get one question that I had about, you know, when we sell the bonds, you guys, I think, said in the text you were going to tell us how much that cost per, so did you approve one of those today? We're going to buy, no? Okay. Well, in the future, if you had the dollar cost to the average homeowner, instead of the millage, most people don't understand millage. I did, and I forgot how to do the calculation. It's based on my assessed value, right? So, I do a little multiplication. I'd just like to know what the costs are. As far as windward preserve goes, is there a possibility for Eels to negotiate with the owner? They're, they're having to preserve some wetland, because they know they have it. Well, what happens if Eels got involved and offset some cost? Maybe negotiated a little more wetland preserve, save them some money? Maybe they wouldn't have to build so many houses. I think there's a possible synergy there, that if Eels got involved, we could preserve that property as well as allow somebody build on their own property. I just think that's something that should be considered. Maybe we can do it, maybe it's too late. But I cannot believe they're building the houses in there. I've seen some of it, and it's awfully wet. It's a lot of wetlands, a lot of filtering of water going on in there. Mr. Tobias, there's a lot of filtering of water going on there. So, I thought it was a good meeting. Glad we didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about $18,000 on that triathlon thing, though, because I thought we were going to kill that. And I thought, but we had the conversation about the Eels program was good. So, appreciate the meeting. So appreciate the meeting, and we'll keep you up to date on the Windward Preserves. Thank you.
Always enjoyable to hear from you, Richard. Robert Scora.
Hi, I'm Robert Scora, and I live at forty-nine fifty Ralph Lane in Merritt Island. And I think everybody's familiar with the water problem we have on North Merritt Island. And is there any, will one of these machines show a picture? Will this show up? What do you do, just put it below it? Pass it up, okay. They show the sand at the pumping station on Hall Road. And Snake Creek is completely blocked. So I know we get a lot of water from the Space Center and everywhere else. And we need the commissioners to look and see if they can't get that cleaned out some way.
Okay.
Forty-nine fifty Ralph Lane in Merritt Island.
I think it's corrected.
Yeah, well, we get a lot of water from Bezos, and I know that's been mitigated, but not in our county. So we need any drainage we can get.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Let me just kind of remind everybody, no, Robert, go ahead and sit down. Let me remind everybody, this is public comment time, and this is not a question-and-answer type period. If we did that, it would take a long, long time to get through it, and then we'd never be able to get the answers until we went back through staff. So please, just come up and make your public comments, and we'll note them. And if there's a commissioner here that's in that district, then we'll look at it. That's all right, don't worry about it. Regina Wyler. Well, hello there, Regina. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, commissioners, fellow Brevard County residents, and all of my Renaissance Fair friends who have traveled from afar to attend both the fair and this meeting. I am a native of this county, and I like to say that I hail from the Isle of Merit. Eleven years ago, BCC had an event at a pavilion on the outskirts of the campus called Dragon Fest. I was there, in awe and wonder, overjoyed that I had an event like this in my own backyard. I experience that joy and that pride in my county's rich culture every January. I want to continue to patronize local vendors, artists, musicians, and everyone else who loves this fair. This event not only brings our community together, it generates revenue, educates schoolchildren, provides a platform to experience history and culture. And above all else, it's five weekends of merry-making with something for everyone. Why this county commission would want to deprive citizens of this wonderful experience is beyond my comprehension. And as you can see, I am not alone in my distress at your decision. Without people who have passion for events, the park is just a parcel of land, but perhaps that's the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Amanda Klein. Good evening, Amanda.
Hi, Amanda Klein, thirty-six hundred Oneida Street, Cocoa, Florida. Sorry, I'm not a great public speaker, but I just wanted to say that about the Renaissance Fair, I don't know if you guys know at all about Education Day. It attracts over twenty-five hundred students who come. It's very near and dear to the homeschooling community. I'm a homeschooling parent. But also to schoolchildren, they come in on buses from schools, private and public. They only charge five dollars admission, free admission for adults to come with the kids. I think that's super important. So I would hate to lose that. I know that this really isn't on the agenda tonight. But I think after reading the public comments from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at the commissioner meeting, I felt like the public commenters were overly negative and and they were completely negative. And I think that if more people had known that that was on the agenda, people like myself would have come and told about the positive aspects of it. Sorry, I'm I just think that it's an important thing for our county. If you want to see an event that really, like, everybody fits in, people of all ages, races, genders, abilities, like, just everybody belongs at the Renaissance Fair. It's near and dear to my family's heart. We go every year. It's a tradition for us, and I would hate to see us lose it just because some people are negative and want to use the park just for basically their private backyard. I think that it's important to our community. I'm sorry, I know I'm rambling, but but don't take this away. Education Day is amazing, and just know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's curtail that. Josie Howe, please.
Okay, hey. This is a part of that piece of property that y'all actually have control over. If you follow that red line, that is the James Road Annex that is still owned by the county and is not in the plat for this development at the corner of five twenty-eight and ninety-five. The James Road from the site, master site file I received today, was designed and developed in nineteen twelve, extension off of a spring. That spring does run out straight to the St. John's River. It also has a manatee protection zone by DEP. It is the funniest thing when you see it on Google Maps, because it's halfway up James Road by Iron Horse and by Southern Strides. Currently, right now, that road in twenty-twenty-one, there was an archaeological survey that's on file with the state in the master file directory. It only told the establishment of the road, but along the road that is still owned by the county is evidence of settlement shells, conch shells, mussel shells, scallop shells, you name it. If you saw the dots on the map, those are some other areas of concern that were excluded in the agriculture, I mean, the archaeological survey, because of due to the wetness of the land. So if you would like that file, email me. Ms. Pritchett has my email address. Over you have my email address. Currently, as of Sunday, because that is still considered a public right-of-way road out there with the neighbor just down the James Road extension, there are multiple washouts. Y'all currently hold the permit in Planning and Zoning, two-three Romeo Whiskey zero-zero-three-four, that would have to be approved for this development to occur. And currently, you can barely drive a golf cart down the road with washouts. The canal is getting deeper. There are active springs that run off from the ranches between, behind Trotter Way and Horseshoe Court. The evidence and the non-agricultural views is very concerning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Peter Solinsk, is it Solensk, is that it? Okay, hey, Peter, come on up.
Hi, good evening, and thanks for allowing me to talk about the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I moved to Brevard back in two thousand nine, so I've had the pleasure of going to the Brevard Fair since its inaugural year. And I've seen it grow with more vendors, more shows, more visitors, all while leaving the majority of Wickham Park free and available for everyday use. While, over the years, I've been able to talk with these vendors and visitors and learn a lot about the history of the Renaissance and about their skills and crafts. And they ask about Brevard from what's the next launch and when's the next launch, to where's a good place to eat, or the hidden gems of Brevard. I know there's a concern for Wickham Park, and I understand that, but I'd ask that you please reconsider the restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen DeRusso.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Stephen DeRusso. I've been here for over twenty-plus years. I've been to over a hundred Renaissance Fairs. I've been to all the Renaissance Fairs here, so I kind of consider myself a little bit of expert. I can tell you right now, in the state of Florida, this is the only fair that is super family-friendly. Of all the fairs I've been to in my life, in the top ten, family-friendly. We have a gem. We don't want to get rid of this. Also, you like facts. Let me give you some of the facts. Of all the rest of the fairs, the closest one is an hour and a half away. The rest of them are two-plus hours. So we have something that not everyone has. We have a good fair that's been established for a long time, that has same population as Deerfield, that's thirty-plus years, gotten strong. Hogtown, thirty-plus years, too. We have the same draw as they do, nine years. Can you see where we can be in thirty years? Think about all the money that it will bring in to help protect our lands, to help do other educational things with this money. Now, I understand there's issues with Wickham Park, that's fine. If you don't want us to break apart, then give us a home in Brevard. Give us some land. We'll fix it up. As rennies, I guarantee you, everyone agree here, that we'll help contribute to keeping the land safe and clean if you give it to us. So alls I'm asking is either find us a home in Brevard, or let us stay at Wickham till we find a home in Brevard. But the point is, the facts from me is, this is a gem. Don't let it go. I, like I said, family-oriented. That's what we want to be known as, Brevard, as a family, right? That we protect our lands, that we're family-oriented, that we are a tourist destination, second to Disney, right? Second Orlando. Everyone wants to come to us afterwards. We have all the things that all the counties wish we had. Or they had, sorry. So please, like I said, either give us a spot at home somewhere in Brevard, or let us stay till we find a home in Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Gertis. Is he still here?
Yes, there he is.
Okay.
No, I was going to make a mistake twice. Richard Mariani is next.
Thank you for your patience for me coming up. I thought we had three minutes. It's been reduced to two. Okay. Once again, first of all, the Carolan Bells. That is in Lake Wales, Florida, which I had the pleasure growing up over there some of my formative years. And to announce in history, in the prior meeting, not to know what Carolan Bells are is very, very disappointing, considering this structure has been this long. For God's sakes, just Google it, and you'll know what they are. And that takes two seconds, but I guess commissioners cannot do that. Now, the next thing is, and that promotes this state, that is a treasure, and I lived in that area specifically. Next thing, I guess we're going to start the program of masked singers here. Since we're blocked out as citizens, I thought we were a community, and we would have everyone televised and create an atmosphere. So I'm going to turn around. How do you like that? That's my message to you, that maybe we should have an iron curtain here, so you can't see me. Or nor the people on television. I mean, what are we, going back to the twenties and thirties where we don't have visual contact with our citizens here? Have we got classes of people that we are embarrassed of that we shouldn't be? This is absurd. We're going back to third grade, and I am so saddened by this.
Thank you for your comment. Richard, if you would please come up. After Richard is Scarlett Hurlbert.
My name is Richard Mariani. I am from Patrick Shores, Commissioner Felton's district, just south of South Patrick, Space Force Base, and north of Satellite Beach. I'm ashamed to say that I haven't been to the Renaissance Fair until just the last two nights. And although I've lived here since two thousand nine, as one of the earlier persons said, I did, although I'm born and raised here, I spent over twenty years in Europe, most of that in Germany, and I went to a lot of Renaissance Fairs. And I have to say that the Renaissance Fair we have here in Brevard County is amazing. And by all means, it should, if we can all manage it, stay in Brevard County. And please, dear commissioners, do not over-regulate it and force it to go leave the county. I would ask that everyone who agrees with me also stand that Renaissance Fair should stay in this Brevard County. Thank you very much. And my final words would be, and this is to borrow heavily on Henry David Thoreau, "That government is best, which governs least." Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I know everybody's all happy about this. We understand it, and you're just going to have to let us get through the public comments, please. Scarlett.
Hello.
Riley Hart, you're on deck.
Okay, my name is Scarlett Hurlbert. I am fifteen years old, and I'm a performer at the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I've been performing there for seven years, starting when I was nine years old. And so I think that this fair is very beneficial to young performers like me. It's, I'm very interested in the performing arts, and this fair has been the biggest contributor to my experience and education with theater and also other educational factors. Because this fair, obviously, it's a Renaissance Fair, so it talks about that period of history. And I am a part of a condensed Shakespeare program. So I have had the chance to learn a lot about Shakespeare and the Renaissance, along with the performing arts. And I think that this is very unique, and I think it's very important to have something like this locally. And yeah, so I think it provides people like me with, like, experience and jobs. And I have also had, like, family members come from out of state and in-state, but further to our fair. And I've talked to audiences and heard that they have also come from out of state and further within the state. And I just think it's very important for this to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Riley, you're up. On deck after that is Jade Dorminy. Jade Dorminy's up next, after Riley.
Hello, my name is Riley Hart. I'm sixteen years old, and I've been performing at the Brevard Renaissance Fair since before it was officially the Brevard Renaissance Fair, making it a total of eleven years. I started out performing at Dragon Fest when I was just six years old, as a part of an a cappella group, performing Renaissance songs and dances. After the first two years of Dragon Fest, when I was just six years old, when I was then eight years old, when the Brevard Renaissance Fair began, this a cappella group continued. It has now evolved into a full show where we perform complex a cappella songs and dances. And yes, this is a group of minors. We do this because we love it, and because it's something that we love to provide for our community. I am also a part of the condensed Shakespeare productions that my friend Scarlett over there mentioned. This past year, I had an amazing opportunity where I got to be a part of writing one of our condensed productions. I took all five acts of Hamlet, and I condensed it into a twenty-five-minute show, where I also helped direct, produce, and play Ophelia. I have grown so much from all of my experiences over all of these years. But out of all of them, this past year, where I got to have this experience, has helped me grow so much as a performer and as a person. It has given me so much more confidence in It has given me so much more confidence in myself and my ability to do and to be. And I wouldn't be who I am today without this fair, and I know that there are many that would agree. And I'm here among the people, asking you to please not take this wonderful event away from the people of Brevard County. And I hope that you consider the words of this community, when we say that Brevard is our home, and help us keep Brevard in Brevard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, 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 please. Jade? Yes. Jeffrey Kriebler is next, after this.
Hi, Commissioner, my name is Jade. I am actually a resident of Melbourne. I have been proudly so for seven years. I have also, over the last seven years, been a very proud member, both as patron and staff, of the Brevard Renaissance Festival. When I first moved here, there were two things I heard, and they clashed quite a bit. The first, I was actually actively encouraged, as a young person, to move away from Brevard, because I heard the words like "Mel-boring." And I'm sure many people here know that phrase.
Not tonight, anyway.
Certainly not, sir. This is actually why we are here. The people behind me today, that are with me today, these are the people that made me want to stay. And there are many like me. This fair, I've seen more art, culture, music, local vendors and artists that would otherwise not have this chance, that have their footing because of Brevard. You want numbers. Look at the amount of money this brings into surrounding hotels, restaurants, other industries. People that travel from, I know people from other nations, states, that come here only for Brevard. There are people that have been drawn here because of what we do here at this fair. And those of us that live here, and most of us that are here, live here. We want to keep this here, because we want this same community to pour the same love, support, back into the community that we call home. Let us keep Brevard fair here in Brevard. You're hearing from people of all ages. Brevard is a family county. You're looking at families being pulled together by an event that is being held in your backyard. Let us keep it here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey, where are you? You don't have a sword on you, do you?
No, sir.
Okay. I was gonna ask the sheriffs to move up.
I left my weapons in the car.
All right, good. Go ahead, Jeffrey.
My name is Jeffrey Niebler. I live in Satellite Beach, Florida. I've been going to the Ren Fair for at least five years here in Brevard. The first Ren Fair I ever went to, I was about eleven years old, and the magic and majesty I saw there, from all the books, movies, and TV shows, I loved growing up as a kid, and it was just there in front of me, real life. Got to learn so much about history and culture, all around the world. Something I believe everything, everybody can fall in love with, is at the Ren Fair, whether it be art, culture, performance. And for it to be leaving Brevard is very sad. I would hate to see it to go. Obviously, so many vendors that I talk to, so many local businesses that I know, all benefit from this. But I think the best thing is the children who go there, who can learn things, see their imagination come to life in front of them, in real people, not on the TV screen, be able to talk and learn about history. And that would be an awful thing to get rid of, 'cause like it was mentioned before, it is a very awesome thing we have here, and not a lot of people can travel to the other fairs. So it is amazing thing to have here. I don't know if you guys don't understand how amazing it is, if you've ever gone to the Renaissance Fair, I highly recommend it. So let's keep it here in Brevard, and let the children and everybody else experience the magic that happens in front of everybody's eyes when you walk through those gates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Wyler, and on deck is Sarah Wardlow.
Good evening.
I've been admiring that outfit all night, by the way.
Rocket made the hat.
There you go.
My name is Barbara Wyler. I reside on Incorporated Merritt Island. I am here this evening in Renaissance garb, to show my support for keeping the annual Renaissance Fair in our county at Wickham Park. I've attended all weekends for the past five years, and watched the public's enthusiasm for the event grow every year. It obviously is an extremely well-received event, and brings a healthy revenue into our county, as it promotes Brevard in a positive way. Although there is some friction for some, created by the fair's presence, this friction, I believe, is felt by fewer people rather than many, because those who object, object to anything in the park. The fair is a wonderful family activity, providing an educational opportunity to hear the majesty of the carillon, to see the hurdy-gurdy and the ancient lute actually played, to watch a jousting match, and to be swept into the ear of the Middle Ages by truly gifted and talented entertainers. These entertainers, who for the most part return every year, have become our dear friends. They greet many of us by name, they play our favorite songs, they ask about our pets, they truly strive to entertain us beyond our expectations. So please, keep the Renaissance Fair at Wickham Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sarah Wardlow, and behind Sarah is Naomi and Kathleen Finnegan.
Good evening, Commissioners, and good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Naomi Wardlow. I've been in Brevard County as a parent, with five children that graduated from Merritt Island High School, from fifty-one years old all the way down to forty. And all my children have learned a lot of things by going to events in Brevard County. And I've been to these events, and I've been a parent that went on a field trip with my sixth-grade son at Gardendale Elementary. They came back from a Renaissance Fair, and they decided to put on a fair at Gardendale, which they all dressed up like Shakespeare and Renaissance outfits, had little tiny booths, sold little things. My son and his friend, they whittled little flutes out of the trees that we have here in Brevard County, sold them. All that money that they made from their fair at Gardendale Elementary School, they went to the Medieval Times in Orlando. I mean, they paid for it out of that money. And some of us parents, like me, I was the chaperone parent, I participated. I believe in it, because there's music. We have a woman named Kathleen that plays the harp at the Renaissance Fair. We have a gentleman with the bronze bells that plays music. He was a drummer originally, but here he is with a five-thousand-pound equipment, with all these bells that are made in bronze, playing music. Then you have all these minstrels, and then you have all these people playing violins and bagpipes. We have all these artists. We also have gentlemen that is teaching blacksmithing, with making swords. We have somebody else that's blowing glass, somebody else that's teaching how they're jousting, they're showing, they're talking, and explaining it. Then you go into a booth, where they're gonna check out your family name, your background, your heritage, your coat of arms. I mean, it's amazing. Then there's different vendors with, like, different plaques, they've made things from scratch, clothing that they've made from scratch, all in this period of time, the Renaissance time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Naomi and Kathleen, and after that, I believe it's Coletta. Well, very nice.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a real quick question first. Do we share this time, or do we each have one?
No, you just have two minutes.
I'm sorry?
You only have two minutes.
Together or separately?
Together. You have two minutes.
Okay. I'm Kathleen Finnegan. I am a classically trained harpist, and I have been a veteran of Renaissance Fairs, amongst many other places for, in international venues. And this is one I've chosen, because what I do, bringing the harp and valuable historic instruments to the street, where people get to see it, makes people love their community, and it accomplishes everything that I've heard here tonight. Thank you very much. This is my daughter.
Hold on, yes, I was just gonna make sure she spoke, said something. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me, thank you for letting me tell you a little about myself. My name is Naomi, and I travel with my mother, who is a harpist, and my father is a magician. I take ballet, and I play the violin. We choose to make our home right here in Florida. I also work with Equestrian Chaos, a family of mounted archers that travel nationally, performing the only mounted archery stunt show in the world. They have united, they have united different cultures globally through mounted archery, keeping this unique art from disappearing. Mounted archery is growing internationally, and the family behind Equestrian Chaos are the pioneers paving their way for a new generation of youth, inspiring individuals worldwide by exposing them to a horse, bow, and family that...
You have to stop, tell them thank you.
Thank you.
No, I want to thank you for your bravery tonight, coming up and speaking. You did a very nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Coletta? And then after that is Jack Redderman. Coletta's not here, or there's, that's not Coletta, I know who that is, that's Avon Minus. Hey there, Avon. All right, Jack Redderman, if Coletta's not here. Hey, Jack. Behind Jack is Nancy Simon.
My name's Jack Redderman. I'm at 568 East Hall Road, Merritt Island. I'm here to speak about not having the video up. If the video was up, and the people that were watching this commission meeting saw these people from the Renaissance come up, it would be a whole different sale. And as it is, all you're hearing is the audio. And I don't think that's the reason that you're here. You're here to promote government, and according to your charter, participation. And for us to be overshadowed with interesting facts and history to be put up there, and then we're not, I think that's disrespectful. For us to take our time, to come down here to this meeting, spend our gas, you know, away from our family, and come here and talk to you, at least give us the courtesy of putting it up there on the TV. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Simon. Behind Nancy is Bowen Finn. Hi, Nancy.
I'm Nancy Simon. I live in Rockledge Drive, District Two.
Would you pull that microphone down a little bit, please? Thank you.
Nancy Simon, I live in Rockledge Drive, District Two. I still can't understand why the county wants to cut down the Rockledge Drive trees, many of them centuries old. Do not give me dubious reasons, garbage trucks, fire engines, school buses that you have sighted in the past, they have all been shown to me misinformation. Like so many people, I am delighted by the beauty and uniqueness of this state-designated scenic route. The canopy and oak trees are invaluable to both animals, birds, and protecting the shoreline. There are over five thousand signatures of people that agree with, "Leave the trees alone." So many joggers, dog walkers, bikers, and families enjoy the road. I am ashamed of the commissioners at this county, who are disregarding the beauty of this historic road. Is it ego, because this was stopped a few years ago? Make the people of this county proud that their commissioners care more for supporting the health of the oak trees, the beauty of the road, as well as the health and shoreline of the river. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bowen? Behind Bowen is Kimberly Gibbs.
Hi, and thank you for your time. I'm Bowen Finn. I live in District Four, off Lake Washington. I want to start off, I moved here fairly recently, in 2019. Due to medical reasons, I was near wheelchair-bound. And I was warned very much, do not explore Brevard. This was not safe, this was not friendly. And the first place that I was able to visit with my wheelchair and my walker was Brevard Renaissance Festival. Through Brevard Renaissance Festival, I found not only a family, but I found a job that I could work, where not even McDonald's would hire me. I would have loved to have been a part of the conversation that made the decision with Brevard, to move the Renaissance Festival, to not allow us to be there. I work as a vendor and entertainer, where I entertain not only children, but adults, where I bring the conversations of multiple generations, where I bring the history of not just the Renaissance, but local Brevard history. Our pirates that were here, our native tinkerers that were here. This festival unites us all in a way that even the Maryland Renaissance Festival, one of the biggest festivals, can look back and wonder, where is that community within us? Brevard has a unique look, it has a unique feeling. This is our home. This is what makes us unique, and Brevard's festival. As I say with all of my participants, shade and sweet water, and thank you.
You're very well spoken. Kimberly Gibbs. After Kimberly is Julian Rays.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kim Gibbs. I live on North Merritt Island. And I'd like to talk about the decision to remove the video from public comment. I learned about that in an article that appeared in yesterday's Florida Today. It was very disturbing to me, for a number of reasons. First of all, I was very disappointed at the decision to remove the video, but I was more disappointed in the tacit approval offered by this board. I attended a community meeting last night, and a county staffer was there. This issue came up, and the staffer wanted to emphasize that, no, 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 the video would still be shown for all of the meeting, it's just the public comment section, that they're not gonna show the video. Whether she meant to or not, she gave a very strong impression that the important parts of the meeting would be preserved and shown on video. It's just the unimportant parts that wouldn't be shown. Is video equal to audio, to the people out there in TV land? Do you think that they got the full benefit of the meeting tonight? I loved these costumes, but the people in TV land who couldn't be here were cheated out of that experience. I want some of those hair ties that I saw. Video's not equal to audio. Public comment is important. The public is here to educate you, as well as everyone else, as well as those people in TV land. Okay, what are the consequences of this decision to remove the video? First of all, I didn't see any good reason for it, at all. It seems punitive, targeted, vindictive, aimed at maybe a constituent. Maybe, can I bother? Someone wants to come here and show a sign, okay? They're not gonna be seen. So, discouraged by all that, I'm running out of time, I'm urging you to restore the video today. Thank you.
Okay, I've asked several times, please, we need to get through this, if we can. Julian Rays, where are you? Catalina Lebel? Okay, is Catalina Lebel here?
She's in the restroom.
You're both in the restroom. Okay, we'll take them when they come back. Sarah Hodge? No, okay, she's not in the restroom, that's good. Hi, Sarah. Behind Sarah is Joseph Costello.
Sarah Hodge, Merritt Island. I'm gonna be quick, but I'm here to support almost every comment I've heard in this audience tonight, from all the groups. And I'm especially here because of the preservation of the mid-reach reef. It's an important reef, and it needs to be preserved. And I think, if you took a survey, most people would agree with that. There was a petition going out, the 2017, I guess there'll be another one, I'm not sure yet. I also, the comment about Kim Gibbs, where, this is ridiculous, that you're taking off part of the public comment video. This is not right. And we can take our own videos, put them on the internet everywhere, if we can't have the video here. And just, please, keep the Renaissance Fair. It's a wonderful contribution to Brevard County. But I support all those comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Julian, who was the young lady that came in? What is your name?
Catalina Lebel.
Come on up, please. And then after that's Julian Rays. Julian's back? Julian's not back. Okay, hi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Catalina Lebel, and I am a performer at the Renaissance Festival. at the Renaissance Festival, as well as helping to manage the entertainment department. So this gives me a very unique perspective onto both behind the scenes and in front of them. So I'd like to speak to you on behalf of the children of Brevard, because that is who I see the most at our fair, because we are not an adult fair, we are not a children's fair, we are a family fair. We provide clean, honest, and fun family entertainment, but more than that, we provide education into historical things that the children might not know about or get to see in person. Because, let's be honest, most kids nowadays don't see anything beyond the four corners of a screen or their mom's tablet. And here at the Brevard Renaissance Festival, we have a lot to offer these children, and we do, we offer thousands of children a unique historical education. Our nights teach chivalry, and tell me if there's a young boy in today's America who could not benefit from a lesson in chivalry. And on the other hand, we have one of the only female jousters in the country. And if a woman half my size in a full suit of armor fighting a man twice her size, isn't a lesson that women can do anything? I don't know what is. Brevard also provides a place that families can be together and entertained equally, not adults, not children, equally family entertainment. Where else can an overworked mom with a bunch of kids put on a beautiful gown and a corset and get to feel like a princess for a few hours while, you know, she gets to entertain her kids, and she gets to feel good about it because it's educational? They get to learn about Shakespeare, they get to see actual actors who bring to life real, we provide real historical, none of it's fiction. All of our casts and everything, it's portrayed to be the actual time period in history with real people. So I ask you, please, to continue to allow us to provide educational, enriching entertainment to these children and families of Brevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too. Now, Julian Rays has not come back, I'm going to go to Joseph Costello. And behind Joseph is Deborah Thornton. Hey, Joe, what do you know?
How's it going? Joseph Castillo, 448 Ward Road, southwest Palm Bay. I'm a new resident to Palm Bay. There's been a couple of themes that have happened, been reoccurring tonight, like facts, like Commissioner Tobias said, and funding. And I want to share some facts. Five years ago, I didn't even know Brevard County existed. I came to this county to come to Brevard County Fair, and we fell in love with this fair, my family and I. And you want to talk about facts, I'll give you some facts. Before we finally moved here last December, my family probably spent tens of thousands of dollars in hotels and meals just coming to this fair. So you want to talk about funding? There's lots of funding that would be lost if families can no longer come to this fair. I also want to know, where are you going to replace that lack of funding? You know, you're asking about all these projects that you're going to be having, that you want to fund, the buying of wetlands, protecting lands. This is a great opportunity that you are missing out on. So I just urge this commission to rethink this disaster decision to let this fair go on, to not go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Thornton, where are you? Here she comes. Behind Deborah is Andrew Mead.
Well, people are probably confused because they know who Deborah Thornton is. My name is actually Lisa Covery, and I am reading on behalf of Deborah Thornton tonight because she had to go to work.
You have to fill out your own card.
And I did, I got the okay from back there.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know, after you're finished, please make sure you have a card.
I do. My name is Lisa Covery, and I'm about four more down on the roster, and I'm losing minutes, so if it's okay, I'll get started.
All right, let's go.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to exercise our civic responsibility. My name's Lisa Covery, a resident of this beautiful county, and I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Deborah Thornton. My name is Deborah Thornton. I am a U.S. Army veteran, a professional performer, and a performing arts teacher. I relocated to Brevard County with my four-month-old infant from New York City two weeks after 9/11. I intended to be, to stay for a year while things cooled off in New York, but instead I have built a life for myself here. Brevard is my home. Brevard Renaissance Fair is a huge part of my life here. I have helped to grow the event from a tiny one-weekend event at Wickham Park Pavilion to the thriving event that now hosts an international cast and crew of over 700 souls and entertains thousands of patrons who travel from all over the country to attend the event, along with members of our local community who look forward to it every year. My a cappella choir students have performed at the event every year since the beginning, and many of these students also crossed over into my condensed Shakespeare company. What a fantastic opportunity for these local youth to get to learn complance, Renaissance, music, and Shakespeare, and actually perform it for crowds of patrons for five weekends. Many of the choir kids have been out there year after year, and they have grown from a group of little kids singing at the front gate into a fully-developed professional-quality act. They sing in two-to-five-part harmony while juggling, playing catch with the crowd, standing on one leg, manipulating puppets, running crowd participation games, et cetera. No matter what field they ultimately go into as adults, the level of comfort, confidence, and competence that they have in presenting themselves before a crowd will be invaluable. We also share our level of complex music and Shakespeare plays, not only with adults who attend, but with thousands of local students every year, especially on Education Day. We hear from students every year that didn't realize they actually liked Shakespeare until they signed. Thank you.
Okay. Wow. Doug Simon, where are you? Right there? Is that you?
You said Andrew Mead was next.
Pardon me?
You said Andrew Mead was next.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Andrew.
My name is Andrew Mead, and I am the entertainment director for the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I also work there as an entertainer. Each year I am responsible for hiring hundreds of entertainers to bring to Brevard County for five weeks. In addition to the incredible talent that already resides in this county, we bring entertainers from all over the United States and all over the globe. This season, the combined cultural talents of artists from Ukraine, Canada, Australia, Scotland, England, Ireland, Austria, and Italy graced this county, many of them with the sole purpose of performing at our fair before returning to their home countries. I had the honor of showing a band of Northern Italians the majestic wetlands of the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge. This was their introduction to America, and this county, a place they've never heard of, amazed them. Surely they've heard of the Grand Canyon and Old Faithful, but their trip here has put this county on the map. Because of their magical experience in this unique and diverse county, I now have emails from entertainers all over Europe wanting to visit us. Not Miami, not Orlando, Melbourne, Florida. Two sisters from Nova Scotia visited the warm Atlantic waters of Melbourne Beach after providing the people of Brevard with their unique, multi-generational, and rarely heard Celtic music. The last thing they said before they left for Canada was that they can't wait to come back. A world-renowned bagpiper flies from a remote island off of Scotland to play his ancient music for the people of this county. He takes two flights and a puddle jumper before he even leaves Scotland to come here. Entire American families make their livelihoods traveling our great nation, entertaining the masses. It's not an easy job. You won't get rich doing it, and the hours are long. We do it because we love it. We love the people. We believe in the power of humans assembling from all corners of the earth and participating in something important. Our business is assembling humans to take a break and enjoy their day, take a break from the stress of daily life. Today, the power of humans assembling takes a different meaning. Today, we're here to tell you that you are wrong. For the last nine years, through the rain, hurricanes, heat, and muck, hundreds of us have called Wickham Park home. Some of us even helped build and tear down the site for nine weeks. We will not stand idly by while so few threaten something so vital and so beautiful. Unlike you, entertainers do not get the promise of a government salary, but like you, we serve the people. If an audience doesn't like a song a band plays, they stop playing it and play a song that people do like. It's called doing your job. We here at the Brevard Renaissance Fair, we do our job. It's time you do yours. Commissioners, you're playing the wrong song.
Children, you are not listening. Doug Simon, please. Sharon Moss, you're behind Doug.
Okay, there's a different topic now. This is the trees on Rockledge Drive. I'm Doug Simon from Rockledge Drive in the county part of Rockledge. The subject on the calendar tonight was spending the EEL money to protect the environmental land, including the Indian River Lagoon, which cost the county lots of money. Why are the Commissioners, particularly District Two Commissioner, doing the reverse by threatening to cut the historic, beautiful live oak trees and their canopies on Rockledge Drive? They go along the river shore, they help protect the river. They help protect the Indian Lagoon, Indian River Lagoon by preventing runoff into it and many, many other environmental benefits, as well as other benefits, protecting houses in hurricanes and so forth. Leaving these stately, centuries-old live oaks alone would cost the county absolutely nothing. So please, just leave them alone. Thank you.
Sharon Moss, thank you very much, sir. Sharon, you're not here, or are you here? Oh, there you are. Behind Sharon is Jason Collet.
Sharon Moss, Melbourne, Florida. One of the things that I want to let you guys know is I come from an area where we have the hugest Renaissance Festival, and that's in Colorado. And I'm here as a member of the Pirate and Charitable Community, and I want to express to you that this is one of the most important events we have to help network and see friends from inside and outside of the county. For many of our Pirates, this is one time a year they come in front, out of state, to see their friends and loved ones and experience the very best of our county has to offer. This event is more than just a fun activity for us. It has bridged cultural, political, and generational gaps for every single one of us, and it has helped extend our family and friend groups in ways no other event can. This one event is a massive boon to the morale of our crews, and is one of the only places we can truly connect and network in an environment that lends itself well to what we do. Dress up, have fun, drink a little rum. On behalf of the brethren of the Space Coast, the Leviathan, the Ten Rapscalians, the Red Diamond Crew, and the Black Rose Crew, we urge to you reconsider the decision to close Wickham Park to our beloved Brevard Renaissance Fair. This is our livelihood, this is bringing money into our county as a business manager in, like, two blocks from there. This is one of the major times I make money. Please don't take it away from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the last time I'm going to call Julian Rays. Is Julian here? She's not here. She has called her three times now, so let the record reflect, we've tried. Jason Colletta, or Andrew Selenek, is this Jason coming? Hey, Jason.
Hello, and thank you all. My name is Jason Colletta. I live on Lake Washington, just a short ways away from the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I've been here since 2000, and growing up here, I didn't really feel a need to stay. When I was looking to go to college, I decided to go elsewhere. And I remember my sophomore year of college, my friend took me to a Renaissance Fair in North Carolina. When I came back after college, I found out that there was one in my backyard. And it's been one of the things that has really helped me create a family here, outside of just my biological family. I also work in staffing and recruiting, and we bring engineers in from all over the country. And they're young, they're nerds, they like the Ren Fair. We're trying to bring people to this county, and this is one of the things that helps show that we have the culture and the interest, and we're more than just a beach, which everyone who lives here knows. But as the EDC has been trying to show for the last couple of years with their rebranding project, not everybody outside of here knows that. And this is just one more way that we can show that we're an interesting place, filled with loving people, and families have things to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Jason, thank you very much. Andrew Selenek? Andrew Selenek, going once, going twice, going to Jeanette Walensky?
Well, Wamsley?
Well, I have no idea, because I, this looks like a doctor wrote it, okay? Thank you. Is that you?
I'm, I'm an artist, I'm a creative person.
Jeanette, is that you? You, Jeanette?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up, Jeanette.
It's a British name, anyway. Anyway, hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Jeanette, and I work for the Brevard Renaissance Fair. I'm the cast director as well as an entertainer. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm not alone in saying that we all love Wickham Park so much. It's beautiful, I love the squirrels, I love the little buddies that come out at night and scare you when you walk in the path because you think it's a big monster. We love it, we take care of it. It is our home, and we don't, we don't destroy it. We love it. We also want to let you know that everybody has come up and asked you for money for your environmental things. You should ask us, because we're not asking for any money. We want to give you money. We want to give the county money. We could do all kinds of things to help you raise money for your environment, to save the trees and save the lagoon. We can do that for you. Also, we are an international festival with people from all over the globe that come and spend their money and put this fair and this town on the map. We also, the Education Day, as one of the ladies was saying, is so very important. What I do, I do, I teach Renaissance and medieval and historical dance. And the history and the education that we provide for these children is so very important, because most of them, well, not most of them, but there are a percentage of them that don't even know who the President of the United States is. But when they leave the fair, we give them a thirst of knowledge. We give them a, like, oh my God, that was interesting. Oh, I just met Queen Elizabeth, and I learned, I saw a blacksmith, and I saw a glass blower, and I saw a joust, and I saw all this stuff. Now they spark their creativity, and they maybe want to read a book. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gwendolyn Ray, after Gwendolyn is Charlie Saint Paul. Boy, you're fast, I like that.
Yes, right up front. Hello, I'm Gwendolyn Ray. I'm a Florida native, Lake County resident, and attended and turned participant at Renaissance Fair since 2006, when I was just nine years old and in the fourth grade. It was attending Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair, run by the Lake County Education Foundation, that lit the fuse inside of me that would send me on this journey of traveling the country and working at least seven different Renaissance festivals this last year alone. Working in entertainment, merchandise, food vending, and even production on the sound and lighting team here at the Brevard Renaissance Festival, following in the footsteps of my father, who was a world-renowned lighting engineer himself. While, it was volunteering at the Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair at 15, through the educational program they offer to supply volunteer hours to students to get those scholarships that they need to go to college. That showed me that there is this whole network of opportunities that you can find in this. It was after I was doing competitive dance, and I found that through hard work and trials, that you can actually build something for yourself in your community. I ended up studying theater in college and coming back to that Renaissance Fair as an adult to still continue to simply volunteer to give back to my community. It was through Lady of the Lakes that I found the Brevard Renaissance Festival, and then ended up getting onto the circuit after the pandemic, when other opportunities in life failed me. If we take away the Brevard Renaissance Festival, you're taking away an opportunity for children to see different paths in life, to see things like glass blowing, blacksmithing, falconry, and even live jousting. The same jousting troupe that does the Brevard Renaissance Festival is the one that I saw at nine years old, continued to see as I volunteered in high school, and then came back as an adult to work at that festival as well. Currently, there are no other festivals in Florida other than two weekends, or in the entire country, that happen at the time of Brevard Renaissance Fair. If you take that away, you're not only taking away the taxpayer money in this county, but you're taking away our livelihood. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
There you go, come on up, buddy.
My name's not important, but what I do is, I'm an entertainer that over the past 27 years has performed at over 30,000 shows, performed Super Bowl, been on TV, performed for, invited to perform for presidential inaugurations, performed for the Pope, performed at Alice Cooper's birthday party, been on America's Got Talent, and hold annual residency at Walt Disney World. My instrument costs over a million dollars. I'm the guy who plays those carol on bells, but it's not about me, it's about this instrument. Now, this is a rare experience that is an educational pursuit of mine, to share with the world. And why do I share all that? Of all the performances that I've performed, and all the festivals, and all the countries and places I've performed at, there's only been one place, one festival, that's not only supported my educational pursuit, but actually promoted it and encouraged it, and that's the Brevard Renaissance Festival. Now, I've had the pleasure of having students from your schools perform with me in daytime and evening shows. I've been invited into your schools to perform master classes for your arts programs and work with your students. Now, our educational days, as we've talked about, I've had hundreds of students actually sit behind this magical instrument and experience it. These are the experiences that help a community grow artistically. These are the experiences that inspire people. So I just ask you not to be foolish and see what's in front of you. Thank you.
Nicholas, and then after that is Connor Shortill. Are you Nicholas? Come on up. Connor Shortill, are you here? Okay, come on up here, buddy. Okay, come on up here, buddy. Just come off to the side.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Nicholas DiMario, and I'm a member of the Brevard community, and I'd like to think that I'm a part of the Brevard Renaissance Fair family. I've been attending the event at Wickham Park for five years now, and I'm fortunate enough to have it so close by, whereas there are some who literally travel parts of the world. There are literally those who travel from other parts of the world to visit the fair and to share with us their time, talent, and treasure. And those gifts don't end with the Ren Fair, they continue on to the Brevard community as a whole. As you're aware, current restrictions concerning events at Wickham Park would effectively ban our fair from the park, and while we may be able to relocate in Brevard or outside of Brevard, or at worst, we don't have a fair anymore, I prefer it didn't come to any of those options. Our home is at Wickham Park, and we would like to keep it that way. I believe we should be able to dialogue and come to a solution that works for everyone. The Renaissance Fair at Wickham Park is a treasure to all of Brevard, and we should treat it as such. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Connor.
Good evening, sirs, ma'am. I am a student at Satellite High School. I'm 18. I have been going to the Renaissance Fair for four years now and have loved going every single year. It is an absolute blast to see all of the musicians and all the performers that take time out of their year to do what they love. I am looking at doing blacksmithing and welding in the Armed Forces, and I have originally gotten that idea from this Renaissance Fair. I saw a blacksmith my freshman year, four years ago, and was just completely entranced and in awe with the whole trade. I loved it and wanted to do it. I have met several talented individuals who want to help me with that goal of being a Thank you.
Thank you very much. Behind Sherry is Gary Madhatter. Sherry, are you Dave Grulick's daughter?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, then. Go ahead, Sherry.
I, I-
I love your father, by the way. He's a great guy.
I'm glad to hear that. I love my father, too. As, as Mr. Steele has pointed out, my name is Sherry Grulick. I am a Brevard County native, born and raised, all 36 years of my life. And I was a District 4 native for most of that. I've had to move, just because of costs. I have also been an OG Ren Fair attendee. I've been going since the Dragon Festival. And as so many others have pointed out in here, this is a major event for our county. You get everyone of every race, creed, background. You get performances that cross all kinds of boundaries and bring people together. For us to lose this on an emotional level would be awful, but it would also affect us financially, the benefits to the restaurants in that area, which otherwise get driven by, by most locals. We know they're there, but we go other places like Vieira, or into downtown Melbourne, or Cocoa Village. This brings people to those local businesses. And even if it's just the fast food places or anything like that, I can tell you right now, having worked the fair myself as well, sometimes you just want to stop by McDonald's to go grab yourself a burger. It's exhausting. But I don't really have much more to say that others have not already said, but I urge you to consider at least giving us time to find a better solution. I understand that we want to protect the park, but I can tell you right now, out of all of the events having gone for the last 10 years, we keep it better than most of the other events that have been hosted there. You do not find the garbage and you do not find the destruction, and plus side, we also try to protect the wildlife while we're there. The amount of people we've all had to try to stop from harassing the tortoises, which is a common problem here in Florida, is a constant. So I urge you to give us time.
Thank you very much. Madhatter, where are you? The Madhatter went away? Oh, man, I was really looking forward to that, too. All right, Kristy Lordy. And after Kristy is Carmen Parise.
Good evening, Kristen Lordy, Cocoa resident, commenter on citizen participation throughout Brevard County. I didn't even realize that you guys had cut off the, the video feed. I'm absolutely shocked by that. A fashion show? I read the article that someone else had mentioned. Well, guess what? Now all of our backsides are a fashion show. So anybody who thinks that the, that the, these meetings should be televised, please go ahead and stand up. Stand up now. If you think that we matter, just like the, just like the commissioners, that we should be televised, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Now, now, hold on. Before you sit, before everyone sits down.
I'm going to let you go ahead and speak, but you, you really need to-
I want more time, then.
Yep. Ma'am, stop, okay? Just everybody sit down.
You can't hold the audience.
You're not, you're not going to do this at this meeting. Go ahead and start, and, and I-
Can you start me over, then? Everyone can sit down, but, I've lost half a minute there.
We'll give you 10 more minutes.
Start me at two.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I haven't gotten to speak.
Okay, well, just start, please. I would like you to go ahead and start your conversation.
My-
We understand what you said very clearly, so if you would continue, I would appreciate it.
Okay, but if I get cut off, this is, I didn't have, I didn't have even two minutes to save my topic. My topic is about Speak Up Brevard, which is a program which, if anybody knows about it, I'll be surprised in this audience, save a handful of people. This program happens once a year. It's in December. It's for the month of December that, there's a website that's open. It's called Speak Up Brevard. This year, I became disturbed on December 5th, when I realized that the county staff, who also decided not to televise our meetings or our faces, have decided not to publicize the event. The event wasn't publicized. I wrote to all of you, no one would correct it. No one would put the dates on the website to update the website, no one would publicize it. I'm the only one who raised publicity for this program in Brevard County, and I expect to be able to continue.
Go ahead.
I have been waiting since December 5th to visit with you about this, and this was the opportunity. I'm here to support the EEL program, like you, Chairman Steele, but this matters. This is an opportunity for citizens to go to this website once again called Speak Up Brevard and put in our comments that the commissioners are required to take a vote on, on our behalf, the staff are required to weigh in on, and are required to do some analysis on that. Unfortunately, for some unknown reason, the website is only open in December. Opens on December 1st, closed early this year, but the staff did open it, so it was at least open throughout the month of December and through January 1st. There is no reason for this website not to be open all year round. The citizens of Brevard clearly want to participate. Because of my personal catalyst, being a catalyst for this program, there are now at least 55-plus recommendations. Last year, there was one recommendation that was tucked into-
Thank you, thank you. You're finished. Thank you very much.
That was tucked into the consent agenda.
Ma'am?
I oppose this.
You're finished. Thank you. Wow. I'm trying to be very kind here, but when you start that kind of stuff, it doesn't help. So Carmen Parise, is that you?
Yeah.
Hi, Carmen.
Hi. I feel her pain. It's all right.
That's okay.
Yeah.
You have that right.
My name is Carmen Parise. I live in Port St. John, Florida. I've been a homeschooler, kids all with three degrees, and lived here for over 35 years. The fair is in its infancy and evolving into one of the country's few family events for Brevard County, and it's become a great expression for the community, the arts, history, and camaraderie, period. You can see it every time I go, I see it. And it may someday find a more permanent fixture someplace, but it hasn't happened yet. And it may even become a year-round program somewhere for, for someone with money. I don't know. But it should be. I, I totally love it. I totally adore it. I love it for the kids, the grandkids, everybody. And one of the things that it's happening, happening right now, right here in front of us, this is a miracle. It's bringing attention where we need it. This might seem a faux pas to all of you, but it's actually becoming a grandstand for all of us to learn, to, to feel each other out, and that's what this is all about. And that's a miracle. Mistakes like this are not a threat. It's not going to become something that's going to weigh us down. It's going to become something that's going to form us for the future, because we can see the community effort that we all desire anyhow. And this is something that's going to boost morale, it's going to boost the community, and we were all designed for this. We were designed for a time like this, and this is what it's for. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have Kathleen Blackshire, and then Elizabeth Seal.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you as a private person, as well as the last time. Kathleen Finnegan is my maiden name and my professional name, in which I am a 20-year veteran of Renaissance festivals. And Kathleen Blackshire is my private married name, and I have very rarely been a patron, but I have at this fair because I live here and this is my home fair. And this is really all I wanted to say about that, is what a different experience it is, how much the love of one's community affects the way that you treat this, and the more people who come here, the more people who will love this place and this county and this fairground and this property, and will take care of it. And I'm also going to share this time with my daughter, just like I did before. This is my daughter as a patron seven years ago yesterday. Somebody could tell me how to do this.
There you go.
Rotate, rotate. Perfect. I think this is her second time up here.
It is, her second time.
That is Naomi, seven years ago yesterday, as a patron at the Brevard Renaissance Fair, and this is what she is today.
Okay. We, we've met her earlier. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right, Elizabeth Seal. Is that you?
It's me, yeah.
All right.
First of all, thank you very much for your time and allowing us to present our case. I have been involved with the Brevard Renaissance Fair since it began in various forms. I'm currently a member of the Condensed Shakespeare Group that you heard about earlier. We call ourselves Bard Light. We squish Shakespearean plays into little bite-sized morsels that make them very entertaining and educational for many of the people that come, and myself. I adore all of our patrons. They come from everywhere. I recognize so many people. My doctor shows up, former coworkers show up, politicians show up, and I know most people's dogs, but I might not necessarily know their names, but they're all so very dear to me. The people in this county who vote for you deserve very large cultural events, and it is very short-sighted of you to not come up with a compromise to allow them to have these events. The Brevard County Renaissance Fair and other cultural events like it bring value to this county. They make life in this county fun and worth living. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Felton, do you have any comments tonight?
Let me first say that I appreciate everyone being respectful tonight. I know you're very passionate about this event, so I appreciate the respectful decorum. So I, my gratitude for you. I appreciate Peter speaking on behalf of the Renaissance Fair, meeting with me a couple of times about this, and I, I think that many of us believe that the Renaissance Fair should stay here in Brevard. I share that view. But I think it needs a bigger venue. That's the thing. And so remember that when the Wickham Park Pavilion was there, that was sort of the de facto fairgrounds in Brevard County. And some people had hopes for the Cocoa Expo, and that didn't pan out. But Wickham Park has become the fairgrounds. And with all due respect to the people who want it to be a community park, they're, they're concerned about that, and I can't disagree with them. So I would only say to you that we'll continue to work together and hopefully find a way for the Renaissance Fair to stay here in Brevard. I share that view. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all very much for, for coming tonight. We've listened very intently, and, and hopefully we'll be able to work something out. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second by Commissioner Tobias? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.